This is the December 5th, 2023, meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board. We have present Select Board members Kurt Hathaway, Joe D'Nardo, Mary Ashcroft, and Matt Geddy. Sharon Russell is home recovering and doing okay, but is not going to be participating tonight. So please rise and join me for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so. Select Board minutes for November 21st, regular board meeting, they're in your packet. Is there any motion?
Ooh, just up as printed, second.
Motion's made and seconded to accept the minutes of the 21st, November 21st meeting as printed. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I'll vote aye too. Okay. Any board announcements? No. Okay, a couple of quick things, I just mentioned Sharon. Carrie will be reporting, I think, a little bit when her time comes, but we have, she and I got together and we are working on the bond application. And I think we're pulling things together very nicely for that. Reminder that our next meeting is this coming Monday, which is December 11th, and it will be at 5:30, so two changes. Meeting at 5:30 and it's on Monday, and this will be the budget meeting where we will go over all of the departments in the general budget. Thank you. Oh yeah, this is a happy one, and I'm gonna preempt the police chief and Carrie, but we have received two checks from the Cortina Inn. One in the amount of 114,000 and the other in the amount of 22,500. And they are in payment, I believe through the end of this year for the contract that we negotiated with the Cortina. And approved at our last meeting. And one last thing, we did have a dire road site visit on November 27th. And we will be interrupting this meeting at 7 o'clock to take testimony on giving up dire road as a town road. So that's the second part of the process. Okay. We have some folks who probably, this is the time when we hear questions or comments from the floor, and we do have some elected representatives who probably want to talk to us perhaps. Why don't you come on up, please?
Thank you very much for having us here.
It's getting to be that time again.
Comfy chair.
Comfy chair, yeah.
Paul Clifford, District 4, Rutland Town, Rutland City. Just as you know, we have, in a month or so, we're gonna start our session, and we just came here tonight, we thought it'd be a good idea to come and, you know, go into the next session to hear your concerns. Anything that's on your mind, anything we can help you with and try to, you know, put forward.
Select Board members, anything on your minds? I will say, thank you, because the dispatch center dilemma that we were facing this time last year, do we fund it or not, appears to have been not, become not an issue because the state is undertaking some kind of a review and possibly not shoving the dispatch to the county level.
Right, that's what I was told today, some information today, that that's, there is a, actually, that review, but we won't get a final review, so legislature, this due January 15th of '25.
Okay.
So that's where that is.
So we'll worry about budgeting if we need to in another year or so, okay?
I know Rutland County, I was told that it's kind of part of that, so.
So you can forward on to them that that's an unacceptable timeline for an emergency service dispatching. That is in really poor shape right now. You cannot dispatch the state of Vermont from two locations.
Right.
And all of the people that are served by that disappeared, but it's unacceptable.
Forward that on.
Yeah.
Tom Burnett, and I represent Rutland Town, West Rutland, Clarendon, and Wallyford. I got, I don't know, three quarters of Rutland down at this section here, but I had an issue a few years ago as far as dispatching goes. There was a car stopped on Route 4, almost on the tracks in West Rutland, and I called, of course, it went down to Rockingham or wherever, and they had no idea what I was talking about or where I was, and of course, when it's local, people know where everything is and slows things down and.
It is not just the local, it's the volume of dispatching for two PSAPs is just unacceptable. There was four before they changed to this, and they were well worked, one in Rutland and the other, I forgot what the third one, you know, and so they kept Williston and Rockingham. And I think I just, and if Chris Clark wants to chime in, they can all tell you that the level of dispatching is just unacceptable. And to have to wait another year or two before whatever, and I think what I've heard through the grapevine is that the state did not make a mistake from going from four to two, but we might be going back to four. That's what the scut up on it, so. You know, and I don't know if any of you were, may or may not have been involved when this took place a few years back, but every emergency service agency, I think, in the state of Vermont said, no, don't do what you're doing.
I wasn't directly involved, but certainly heard from everybody, don't do it, yeah.
But if you listen to multiple frequencies, you're hearing the same voice over six, seven different frequencies. They're just, they're bouncing from county to county, their fire EMS, police are all over the place, and you try to, I honestly don't know how some of those dispatchers do it, they're obviously very good dispatchers to be bouncing around like that, but they're so short-staffed and shorthanded, and their burnout's pretty high. Because they, they're taking on too much responsibility.
Sounds more like air traffic controllers and.
Almost even worse.
I was gonna say, if they, if they took care of airplanes like this is doing, I don't know as if I'd ever fly again. You know, it's just, I mean, Ed, do you have any real input on, I mean, on the dispatch? You're more involved than we are.
I am.
Said about, as far as having local people, they hired local people, it was easier for the dispatchers, they didn't have to travel, you know, 50 miles to work and come back in bad weather, nights, whatnot, so. The quality of the dispatchers we had, they knew the area. They could dispatch, they just knew things because they lived around this area. But they're just hiring people from, not that it's bad, they're hiring people that have no idea, they're looking at a map, trying to figure out. They're sending us to calls that are Rutland City or West Rutland and trying, we have to tell them, that's this agency, not us. Just simple mistakes, but it all adds time on, on the call. Especially, I know the fire calls, they've had some issues where they sent the wrong fire department to a fire on grocery here in the town. So took a while for Rutland Town to even get involved, and that was, you know, pulling the golf house that.
All right, so that's the dispatch center. Yeah, Matt.
I was gonna change gears completely, so if you had something else.
No, I was gonna change gears too, go ahead.
So obviously housing's gonna continue to be taking up a lot of your time in the session. Unless somebody discovers a magic wand and throws up a lot of structures in the next six months. I think we probably anticipate another short-term solution coming. So whatever that may be, if you could just convey the message that you know, if there's gonna be a system that's gonna burden the municipality, that would be nice to have some support from the state on that. You know, so that's not to say it needs to be one solution or another, it's obviously a complex and difficult problem. But to sort of set up a scenario where people are gonna be concentrated in one area and cause a burden on municipal services is not really fair to any town, whether it's Austria, the city, or anybody else.
All right, that's what I was gonna bring up, so I think we've got it covered. Not, we're interested in long-term solutions, or at least I am, and less of the blame game, just, yeah, get it done.
I'll just comment, Art Peterson, Rutland District 2. And I'm certainly no expert in housing, I would admit that right from the get-go, but a lot of people are putting a lot of effort and time into finding solutions, and it seems to me that it's almost tied in unsolvable knots. Between trying to modify Act 250, protect property rights, renovating properties, or finding ways to get a hold of properties that can be renovated and made into apartments, and all that goes with the regulation. Act 250 regulation on top of municipality regulations. From my listening to things, I never hear a solution. And I'm at the point, I think we need to grab one or two things and fix them and see if we can get something going.
The housing, the ad hoc housing group for the, it's mostly the city, but I sat in on it, they did have several things as possible solutions to work towards, so you might want to check in with the regional commission and.
Are they making any progress with any of them?
Well, they presented, they did a presentation to legislators, I don't know how many of you were able to be there.
Yeah, I did hear.
That's, that's the ad hoc group, yes.
I thought about redoing the landlord tenant rights laws at all to give landlords a little more authority to get rid of the people. I mean, we're not the 20% of the people that you are, of all the problems they have. And if you have a landlord that has, invites these people in, and then they don't pay, it takes six months for you to get rid of them, it costs thousands of dollars to get rid of them, there's no recourse for a landlord to get rid of them. So therefore, you have a bunch of houses that are now Airbnbs, they make better money, I have to have the people there, there's a whole bunch of apartments gone there. And now, and you have the laws where the landlord can do nothing, they have to eat it for months and months at a time.
Every year, there's, there's bills proposed to work on that, and every year they don't get taken up.
That, that could, I mean, there might be a landlord who'd be willing to give people a chance, because all that, 100%, only 20 are the bad.
Right.
This is not for me, this is from a person I spoke to at Rutland Housing, for years, yeah, they would just change those laws there so it'd make it easier for us to get rid of those bad people. I mean, there's some people that we just, you're never gonna rent them, it's impossible to rent them, they're just, whether it be mental health, drug abuse, or whatever, bad parenting, I don't know what the reason is, but some of them, why should the other 80% suffer because of the 20% are the bad eggs?
And we hear this all the time, and we also hear people who won't rent for that very reason. They will not open up their property because of it, and it's certainly an issue, and as Tom said, I mean, we've, there's bills every year, it seems like, but they languish because there's no will to do it, so.
So obviously criminal justice reform, there's a lot of good reasons for legal changes that were made in recent years, we don't wanna, we can't hold everybody in jail, and we don't want to criminalize poverty, but I think the pendulum's gotta swing back the other way a little bit. I think everyone agrees, the mayor has said it very well. We gotta stop this revolving door, and when you get repeat offenders, we gotta be able to hold those people to protect them, and we're gonna have a police budget meeting there, probably a couple of them. Talking about, are we adding an officer or not, and part of me thinks, wants to ask the question, well, what's the point if you can't get arrested? You're just gonna catch and release them faster? We need more, we need more help, but we've gotta be able to see some results from, from doing the work too, so.
There are gonna be a number of bills this year. On the vice chair judiciary, they'll come through my committee. There's one being proposed right now, it's grouping misdemeanors to turn them into a felony, which will give it some teeth. Unfortunately, there's no minimums, so even if they go to a felony charge with no minimums, people can still fall off the bottom and not be detained. And there's also talk of already reducing the penalty for that felony. But if we do get that bill, it's gonna be better than it is now. I've got, I think, six criminal justice bills that I'm introducing, one of them is bail is hard to, is hard to fool with, because there's potentially constitutional issues with it, the way the Vermont constitution is written. Don't ask me to go into details about it, because that's above my pay grade, but I have another bill that mirrors Senator Collmore's bill in the Senate, and what it does is it tweaks the language with conditions of release, and what it, it's the conditions of release around the Big 12. And what the Big 12 are the most egregious crimes, you know, murders, aggravated assault, and things like that. So with, with the way this bill would work, if we can get it passed, the guy who caused the accident on Woodstock Avenue and killed the Rutland City Police Officer would be in jail right now.
Well, that's, those cases are gonna be, hopefully, you know, fewer and further between though, and I think the bigger problem on our resources is actually the accumulation of the small crimes. Go right back in the store and grab the next night.
Right, we've got, I've got stuff around that, I've got two retail theft bills. I'm proposing to enhance a trespass law into a, right now, the trespass law has got teeth in it, I think it's three months, $500 fine, something like that for trespassing. But my bill, and a lot of these people are being trespassed out of businesses, but they're going back in the next day. And the bill that I have, if you re-trespass it, it's a felony, which gives it some teeth, potential to hold people. Another bill that I have, it's, if your car's unlocked out here and I go get in it to steal something out of it, I'm not breaking the law, there's no law to stop me from getting into your car. So I've got a bill around that to make that a misdemeanor if somebody gets into your car, but I've also enhanced it with a potential auto theft felony, so. Got some stuff with, you know, and it's, what I just said isn't gonna cure everything, but it gives the potential to hold some of these bad apples, you know, the there's probably three or four people in Rutland and in the area that are doing, you know, most of the trouble, and, you know, I mean, you go on Facebook and these new neighborhood watch groups that are on there, I mean, they follow, there's probably three people they follow around that are causing a lot of the problems, and if we can get, if we can get a percentage, that small percentage off the street, it's gonna make things better, no doubt. That's, that's the goal, and I'm sure there's gonna be some other bills too that people are gonna have that are gonna work toward that.
State attorney talked about having two tiers for the courtroom, right now we have just one, one way to go in the court, one track, they have a second track just for misdemeanor violations. So it's faster, it's, you don't have to wait three years before you go to two or.
Right. The governor did just appoint seven more judges in the state, there's one more for Rutland County, which is gonna help. And I believe one of the judges is gonna be specifically for the backlog, from what I hear, so.
Okay, anything else? Well, you've got our laundry list. We will be having our usual pre-town meeting in January, we haven't set the date yet, so of course you're invited to come in.
Sure.
The night before town meeting.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
Have a great holidays.
Something comes up, you know how to get ahold of us.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the floor? Anyone calling in or on Zoom? Okay, let's move into our agenda then. See, I understand that Carrie Clark has swapped, and we're gonna put Carrie at the top of the agenda, because she has a training she has to get to right and early tomorrow morning. So Carrie Clark, town clerk and treasurer.
Well geez, this is a surprise. You didn't have to pick it up, I could have waited, not a big deal, but thank you. Let's see, so I put two pieces of paper on your desks. One of them shows what we received in our local option tax money for this quarter. That would be the top number on your sheet. And then the other one that I put on there has to do with the police Cortina money from the end of fiscal year 23. So you can see that in regards to the local option money, we received $463,000. Again, well above the average of what we have anticipated. We were anticipating 1.2 for the entire fiscal year, we still have two more payments to receive. And we are so close to that, we only need $325,000 more to achieve that goal, and I think it's safe to say that we will be going above our goal this year, fingers crossed, God willing. So do you have any questions or comments about that?
Matt does.
So I noted in the paper, I think the city had about the same experience, they were anticipating the same and exceeding the the same, so I take it that's a good sign that we're not, we're not receiving part of their money.
That was gonna be my question, yeah.
I agree, I think that they, I heard that they got their share and we got ours, so I wouldn't, I don't think there's a question there. Again, the breakdown come to us as far as what it is, unfortunately, and I wish I had that, I could give you better answers, but I don't have that.
I don't think we've ever been able to get that.
No, no.
Yeah. So, okay, good news on that front, all around. And now on the, the, I don't know if you got it blue, there's a blue line across the top and it says directed patrol, so does this give us what we need to know about how the Cortina money is being used and how much is left in it?
So essentially, yes, basically, the number that is highlighted in yellow in the corner, 182,253, that is what would be left over June 30, 2023, to start fiscal year 23, 24, July 1st. So you were asking for a starting balance so we could move forward, and that's what the number is going to be. Um, so I already.
There's two questions, so. Joe is forming one, and Matt's got his hand up, so.
I'll do my best, what's the first question?
Okay, no, because he had his hand up, he gets to go first.
That's fine, I was talking out loud.
Okay, so Carrie, I'm just trying to follow the, the numbers in the box on the left in vertical, I, these look to me like they're just overall police department expenses. And I'm not sure, so at the top, the piece that's going horizontal, it looks like this is your allocation of the payroll and other expenses out of the funds that we received.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Right, for the hotels, okay, so.
Okay, so.
How are, how are you, so that leaves us with the 228 number on the right, and then it looks like you're then subtracting 10% of net expenses to come up with the rest, so what, tell us what's going on there.
Sure, hold on, my oven is doing something stupid. Okay, oh God. All right, anyway, so the top, going across. So last year, as soon as we started getting the money from Cortina, I started a spreadsheet. And throughout the entire year, I kept a running total of any money that came in. And then I also, in addition on that spreadsheet, every payroll, I'd go through everybody's timesheet and put down exactly the numbers that they worked at the South End and what that equaled to in their pay stub. So I had a running total going, and what you see there is the totals of my running total across, so we got in for the fiscal year 23, $292,220 from both Days Inn and Cortina. And that was June 30. You'll see under payroll that we expended between the officers in fiscal to year 23, $55,026. The other expenses are like, when the vehicle was running and they put it on their timesheet, there wasn't many times that that happened. You know, they use hours and such, that's what, that's what the constables do and whatever, but it also included, that $8,400 included $6,500 roughly to Langrock, sparing for portion of their time. It was, I think in May or something, that we paid out a portion of that that went to the Court, with the Cortina funds. So then you'll see the balance, if you net all of those together, is 228. So keep that in mind, when we go into the box of, on that sheet, I took the, and this is all, by the way, approved with Andrew and Susan, so we all had a say in this, so the numbers came out between all three of us. So the total expenditures for the police department, 2022, 23, is the number at the top, and that's all of their lines, whatever they expended. We decided that in order to, we had a police committee meeting, if you remember, and I'm just saying this for public reasons. And we decided that we couldn't go back in time and figure out exactly how much fuel was used down at the South End, all the little things that you could not necessarily calculate easily. We, we needed a figure of what was actually expended down there, other than just their salaries. So we decided that we were going to take a percentage of each of their expense lines and apply that percentage and get an average for that fiscal year, so that we can then deduct that from what we, what the balance was. We made the decision in those lines that the salary line, the SRO salary, the School Resource Officer, that didn't make any sense to include in the expenses. It also didn't make sense to include the dare money, which is part of Angie's SRO. And then we, a big portion of our discussion was how we were going to include the overtime line, because that's the line that all of the money came out of in the budget. So basically, we took it, we didn't necessarily take it out, but we didn't want to double dip. So we, we took that amount of money, which you'll see above in the payroll line, the $55,000. We couldn't include that twice, so we took that out there, tap it on the horizontal line up there, that equals the 228. Basically, net all of those together, you get 465. Basically, net all of those together, you get four sixty-five, uh, three fifty-four. Um, one day, a couple of weeks ago, I had to calculate the percentage of time that they spent down south. And between everybody um, getting, you know, manual, manually, Susan and I, it came out to be about roughly ten percent of their time was spent down there. So I took ten percent and applied it to all the expense lines minus the ones that you see in front of you. Comes out to be forty-six thousand dollars. If you net the twenty-two twenty-eight and the forty-six thousand dollars, you're gonna come up with the balance of one eighty-two. And that's the amount to end the fiscal year and start the next fiscal year. The calculation were, well, the calculations for this fiscal year are not done yet, but we have a starting point. And this doesn't include the Tahoe and it doesn't include any overtime yet that has already occurred up to this point. And it does not include the new payments that came in a couple of weeks ago that Mary mentioned earlier.
Right.
So I have two follow-ups if I may.
Sure.
All right, so first, quick, uh, chief, did you get a chance to look at this and this?
Carrie came in for it, yes.
Okay, good.
So uh, second um, accounting question, Carrie, and I don't know if this is a you question or an Andrew question, but for purposes of doing the budgeting, we want to make sure that things don't look like they're out of whack. So the way um, things had been on the last draft sheet that we saw, I think all the, I think the overtime line looked nuts, because you know, there's, that's where um, funds were being paid out of, but of course, we didn't have any offsetting income. Um, so could, could we take, essentially, it's about a hundred and ten thousand dollars here, it looks like. Um, that's coming out of this fund. Would we show that as income in the fiscal year from, you know, basically a transfer from one, from this fund to the police budget? Um.
So, like, how are we going to show it on our budget sheets, basically, for people to really understand? Is kind of what.
Yeah, because we don't want peo- we don't want people to look at the police budget and go, wow, you guys, you know, overspent the budget by a gazillion dollars, because it's not reflecting the fact that that, that was paid for out of these funds.
Right, well, that'll re- that'll be reflected in the audit report that is in draft form right now, as far as the financials for last year. So any questions that I'm gonna get or that you guys get should be directed right to the audit report. Like, it's going to be clear um, that there were monies allocated to the police from the Cortina. Um, moving forward.
Will you be? Uh, sorry, will, will you be available to attend our budget meeting on Wednesday at four o'clock?
She's, she's gonna be up at Lake Maury, right?
You're gonna be having fun. I see, okay.
Wait, what budget meeting? The committee meeting for tomorrow?
Uh, police, police committee, yeah.
Yeah, I have training tomorrow with Teresa at Lake Maury. Um, but I, I always come to any other budget meetings that you guys have, so. But I, to, to kind of follow up on what you were saying for this fiscal year, maybe we set up a new line, uh, instead of it saying overtime. Maybe it says something different, um, in addition to an overtime line. Um, again, that also might be a good question for me to, to talk to Teresa about tomorrow, since we're talking about payroll and NIMRAC tomorrow. So I could always ask her that. Um, when we're setting up for budget purposes, for, you know, approval from the voters. I don't know if that answers your question or kind of skirts around it.
Uh, sort of, uh, we could probably talk about it another time.
Yeah, so I think this is, this is good news. Um, and my question would be, is the ten percent figure, are you working on that for this coming budget year or?
I'm glad that you said that, because that was my next thing.
Do we use that? Do we continue to use that?
Good question, um, that I would recommend that since we did it one way this fiscal year, that we continue for the current fiscal year, doing the same thing. Um, I think that, uh, again, the SRO doesn't make sense to keep in the, the expense line and the dare doesn't make sense, um, and.
No, I understand those. I'm, I'm questioning the ten percent.
I think to make it consistent, sure. It, it does make sense and it's been a question um, that we've discussed among ourselves. Um, and I would, and so.
Okay, um, I'm, I may, we may want to drill down a bit on that ten percent, but we did not here, not now. Um, as part of our budget discussion, so, yeah.
But just, um, if I may make a suggestion, if you talk about it tomorrow in committee, um, whatever comes of it, it needs to be written down. It needs to be something tangible that can be referred back to at any purpose or for any purpose at any time, um, especially when we cut out the year next year. And in order for the money not to roll over again into um, the capital improvements, it will be another practice to then make a motion that it doesn't do that before the end of fiscal year. So we'll have to do that every year that we get the money.
Right, okay. Okay, any other questions? I mean, we've got probably other questions, but we've also got a police committee budget meeting tomorrow, so.
I might, I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I have a question, because I don't, I guess I don't like the way we're putting the funds together and taking them out of one budget. One, some of the funds are tax funds that um, fund the police budget and the other ones are payment funds from Cortina, but we're showing them all out of the expense. And if you don't, and I think this is Matt's point, we're not showing an income line on the police budget to offset the expenses. Um, and, and people would get the wrong ideas and, and I, and I've questioned whether or not there was a way to be able to pay the officers the direct patrol time at the rate that is set. But that doesn't go through the police budget, it comes out of that Cortina money. So that they're, they're separate items, because um, it's easier, I think, for laypeople to understand, we're, we're not showing an income, so when you, if.
I'm kind of looking at the top part of our police budget and thinking, maybe there's a line up there. Is that what you're thinking?
Right, but you see, the problem with that is if we don't know what that number is until after it's spent.
Yeah.
So how do you put that into a budget? You know, I mean, I guess you could guesstimate, once we've been through this a year, you could guesstimate and say, it would be like the highway gets a hundred and twenty thousand, and that's basically an estimate we use year to year. It's not always the same, so you would have to show, and now that we have a year's practice, you could probably easily do that, show that income.
Well, we would budget, I mean, if we're gonna budget an expense, say, for directed patrols, which would be an estimate, you'd put in an offsetting income line, so it's gonna zero out. Or if we hire additional officer, probably same thing, right? So you're gonna have an estimate at the expense, we have the money and the, and this fund available to pay it, you would estimate the same thing on the income side.
Yeah, so, so if there's, there's an income line on the police budget, and now that we have a year's experience behind us, I think with that, and, and you guys could probably come up with a realistic number that we are actually spending out of the money for those patrols that are directly payable by the funds we got in, and then we could show that as an income. And then you would have offsetting um, expenses that would be the direct patrols. And, and that would, it wouldn't show that big deficit that.
The other issue that we kind of have to drill down on, I think to some extent, Mary's suggesting is the directed patrols are the directed patrols, it really doesn't fully capture, you know, the time spent down there, and I'm not sure how we get to a ten percent number.
Yeah.
When seventy percent of calls are down there, but we can talk about that another time.
Um, and then I think, well, just for food for thought for your um, meeting is to how funding additional officers in, in whether we, you know, I think we've talked this a little bit, would be funding them from the monies we have, we're, we're starting out with approximately a hundred and eighty-two. We just took in another one fourteen. So there's a couple of hundred thousand there that can go toward the directed patrols, but could also go for additional resources. So, you know, if you guys hash that out tomorrow, that would be great.
I think we're gonna have some recommend, we've had some recommendations already.
And, and I think it was premature to make a recommendation until you actually got the payments. Now, now you've got a plan and we have a signed agreement, so it'd be easier to, for us to do something.
Well, okay, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
And you'll get another whack at it Monday at five thirty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not being correct.
No, 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 no. Um, this is one of the, the tougher ones that, you know, the piece of budgeting that we have to do, so. Uh, Marty?
Yeah, I just wanna say I'd like to speak to the board tonight, I'm not on the.
Okay, all right. Um, yeah, let me add you here. All right, anything, Carrie, anything else?
I think that's enough. I do have additional that I could talk to about the Cortina, but it can wait for another time, as far as, especially, I can explain the ten percent and that was a huge chore, so it is ten percent for real. But I can, another time.
Yeah, okay, yeah, and, and it'll be, I mean, at the police committee, we would need that information. Right, so.
You uh, time to put together an email to us that we can review for tomorrow, that might be helpful.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll see.
Okay, all right. All right, but anything else for Carrie, town clerk and treasurer? If not, moving back up to the top of the agenda, safe travels tomorrow, Carrie.
Thank you for, for letting me go first. I really do appreciate it, but thank you.
Welcome. Uh, Mike De La Hanty, town's first constable. No, Mike. Okay, Ed Dumas, town police chief.
I left one of your guests there. Did I count them out this time today? Any questions on the last uh, calls for service last two weeks? We're a little lower, uh, officers have been taking some lead time. Lynn did get the, any questions on that for a moment?
Nope. It's not.
Okay. Yeah, Lynn did get the uh, numbers for uh, the month of, excuse me, the month of uh, November done. Uh, total number of cases uh, went down to one sixty-six, uh, a hundred and twenty-nine were at the south end of town. Seventy percent of our time was down there. Looks like, uh, if I look at the previous years of nine, from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two, uh, this November was the highest one so far, as was the previous month, a hundred and forty-five. And the previous month for that was number one ninety-seven, the ones for that, yeah, it's consistently gone up. Any questions on that? The other thing, uh, I think Bill was uh, nice enough to actually get ahold of Stalker last week. Said he was looking into, actually JP had mentioned to him about getting the camera, the uh, radar system to hook into the school, by the school. We talked about it, we, I wanted to know why my budget line for equipment was higher.
Yeah.
And Ted remembered that we had put in an extra six thousand for uh, the two units to go by the school, down the hill and up the hill, where you just have a flashing light twenty-five miles an hour. Uh, we're, we'd like to put one of those units at the bottom of the hill and one at the top of the hill, and then we can monitor for speed and whatnot and uh, they give a quote on what people are, how fast they're going down, permanently mounted to the pole.
This is just a, basically a permanent uh, speaker and a sign.
In the sign, right there. And uh, we wanted to get two of them. The first quote came, came back a little over six thousand. I had mentioned a bill that we only wanted, we budgeted six thousand, the guys from Stalker who I met today uh, agreed to rewrite it and uh, give them to, give them to us for three thousand a piece, so. We got six thousand.
And is it your idea to put those on the existing poles?
Yeah, because the AC units is already there, that alternating current power is right there, so we just gotta wire them in. And they're also cheaper than getting the uh, solar mount models, that's an extra, I don't know, what is it, Bill?
It's like double the price.
Double the price if you get the solar out on the top, so.
The only thing I don't, I guess I don't like about the one at the bottom is if you're coming up the road, theoretically, the speed limit is thirty-five till you get to that point.
Yeah.
Um, so it starts flying, when you guys had the speed card here, it would start flashing way down the road, which you're not really doing anything wrong, and that one would be, it's too bad that it wasn't up the hill a little bit further, like almost delays driveway, so that as you're coming up the hill, when you approach that school, if you're doing thirty-five, it goes nuts, but.
That'd be a bigger expense.
It very expensive, you have to run power out there too.
And I understand that. Um, or if we get a solar one, it's gonna cost us.
Yeah, we talked about that, and Dave was talking about, you know, we were, that was being talked about as incorporating the area in within that sidewalk project and stuff to, to do that. Um, so you want to put this in your new budget?
No, this is, we already had this in last year's budget, that we had twenty-one thousand.
See, this to me is, these are expenses for public safety that it's just like buying the cruiser out of that money we have from the Cortina. Is, is, would these, would this be a legitimate expense to, instead of using tax dollars, use money that we have for public safety out of those funds and pay for it? And they could use their funds for something else.
Well, this isn't at the south end of town.
The, I don't think that that money was designated as a south end of town only expenditure, but you know, there's a stipulation. Because that means that the Tahoe can only respond to calls at the south end.
I think, probably.
I'm not going there.
Probably the case is we can decide as we go with board vote, I mean, we, there was a vote before I got on the board, as to you, to using it for the directed patrols, and then there was subsequently a vote, vote for the, for the um, cruiser, but I think we can take up that issue after we get through more of our budgeting.
I mean, if you want to discuss it after, I'm just thinking, you know, the less burden we can put on the taxpayers using this money that's given to the town in lieu of services rendered, we could use it for those things, anything we can do to stop taxing, but that's, I'm not a, I think this is a good idea. I just didn't like the location of that lower. Gives you a false sense of where you're.
It's there.
We can put up a sign though, before that, it says reduce speed at. To sign.
I don't disagree, but the power's not up there, it's down.
Yeah, well, I know, yeah, and that was the, I understand.
The only thing I'd say about the uh, probably the most effective use of the, the time is when officers are physically in the south end. That seems to lower the issues we have down there. And when we're not there, the issues compound. I didn't see them.
Um, we hadn't seen, we just got this quote, so we hadn't.
Right, I, I just brought up.
Okay.
Making decisions on it, I don't.
Okay, so let's um, we, we're needing tomorrow, the police committee's meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
Should, do you want to take a look at it then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know, man.
Very good.
But you said this was in for this year's budget, right?
Uh, yes, that's, that was in the equipment line, because you asked me how come the equipment line was so high? That's why it is. And I'm gonna wait, there's, we had talked in the last police committee meeting about outfitting uh, cruisers with a radar, yeah, we'll talk about that tomorrow too.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Let's do that, let's go here. So we're still waiting on the quotes for the prison transport, single style in the back of the cruiser, the Tahoe and the two thousand sixteen Charger. Uh, hopefully I'll hear something on a computer tomorrow from Panasonic to put in the Tahoe. I believe we've already spent the money, or at least Ted says he filled out, Carrie probably know for sure, uh, fifty-seven hundred and change for the uh, radio in the Tahoe. And we, that's right, we just got, it's confirmed uh, on twelve-one of this year, so we're just waiting to hear back on getting it, I guess. The other thing I'd like to do is I'd like to uh, thank the board for listener, me complaining up here for the last year and a half about how busy we are down the south end. Thank the police committee for, you know, considering to hire another officer. All of you actually have spoken about that. Uh, Carrie, Susan and uh, Andrew with uh, Audi and Company, I know they didn't do a crap ton of work. I know that I was off and there was some issues. On how to make decisions and I apologize for any problems we had, but I just thank you all for listening to us and uh, as we move forward, it means a lot to me and the gentlemen and women that I work with. And thank you.
Thank you, Chief. See you tomorrow. Any questions for the chief on anything else?
I have a new question, have an observation.
Okay.
What's that? That we had to remove a gentleman from one of my vehicles sleeping in the hayburn.
Oh, really?
Today. My tenant happened to see him and then he disappeared and she went looking. I wasn't home. So I'm not sure what that was all about, but.
It was a warmer spot to sleep.
I I guess, but um.
Lock, lock your cars in your houses.
I mean, I mean, I, it's, if he wasn't in the truck, he might have been sleeping in the hayburn. I I don't know what to do. There's no way to secure that barn to the point where it can keep people out, but I thought it was kind of funny. And then she ended up find, get him and made a couple of phone calls and somebody did come and pick him up and took him somewhere. So we didn't leave him out in the cold, but we did a victim from the truck. And the truck is now locked.
He wasn't there for more than twenty days, so he didn't even do the extra process.
Okay. I'll keep that in mind.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. All right, John Paul Fagin, town health officer, public safety building clerk and second constable. And JP is on.
How are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
Good. So it looks like we're finishing up the final wall on the footings. We got through the ledge that we found last Thursday, okay? Um, and I, we were able to handle it within the ledge allotment in the contract. Monday morning, uh, Joe and I had a meeting with Ed Clark and Sean from the general contractor, and I think he he can better uh, bring you up to speed on where we're at with that.
Okay, so this is a little bit of action needed C, boards reviewed update on public safety building. What have you got, Joe?
Okay, so as JP said, I I met with Ed and Sean from VMS and we went over the um, charges that were here and um the the ones that I think the board had the most interest in asking questions on were the um, the charges for um, additional time for the uh uh superintendent, project manager. And then I got an explanation on the um winter charges for the thing. So the the project has been delayed several weeks for a a number of reasons. Um, so um I, I guess I I talked with, or I did talk with them and um, with Sean and and we agreed that um they would reduce the amount of time that they were going to charge um, us for, for the the, instead of the three and a half weeks, they're charging us for a week and three quarters, which is basically the delay due to the unsuitable soil. Um, all of the rest of the time that the delay is some our fault, some their fault, some nobody's fault, the weather um, have kind of been wiped clean off the slate. So um, basically that the two numbers that are there, the ninety-eight hundred and the fifty-nine hundred will be cut in half. And so we're gonna save about eight grand, eight, eighty-five hundred on that. The charges for the winter time steel, those are directly from the steel erection crew and VMS doesn't have any um say over that. Their, their, the original plan had things gone smoothly. They would have started sometime in November with a steel and been done, I believe, by mid-December. So because they started before their winter rates kick in, which are December first, they would have just honored the original price. Um, they have a winter schedule from December first to March thirty-first that there's an increased cost due to cold weather operations and stuff. So that's where that comes from and and I don't like it because it is due to some of the delays, but it's not something that either VMS or us have a say in. That's I think there's probably a written agreement between VMS and the steel company that says, you know, this is the schedule as long as we stick to it, but these are the penalties. And so um, I think that they just forwarded that. And so that part, but we did get a reduction in that um, which I was okay with. Um, so basically we're only just paying for the extra time that we were delayed. They they kind of waved off the, it was a week and a half or so, the concrete guys were there and I said, well, nobody can verify that that's our fault or their fault or anybody's fault. So they were very good about it. So I I said, okay, we can do that. Um, and then um, there will be a this will be a revised uh, an amount, the um the one sixty-one, four forty-four is going to be reduced by just about, I think it's eight thousand dollars um, that we will be coming out of the contingency fund. The um and I asked, had some specific questions with regard to the um additional concrete and and what that was is that they're, what they had initially anticipated was based on um what they had for the best information during the excavation, they found some situations that required additional concrete and stuff. And and that's how that generated the um the extra twenty-eight thousand. Now, still pending out there is a retaining wall, which Fabian does not believe will be needed. And we talked about that a little bit. Um, there is a guard rail in it and that, and I'm not sure how they were going to do the retaining wall and the guard rail for that money, but there will, there will there will probably be a guard rail. It would be foolish not to have a guard rail on that bank. Um, but that money is um out there that maybe will be deducted. There will be a certain portion. I'm not sure how much. It might be eighteen thousand or so. I'm I'm figuring they should be able to put a guard rail up there for around ten or less.
Okay, so it was twenty-eight.
Hundred bucks a foot for guard rail, hundred bucks.
So.
It was the, the, what I saw was twenty-eight thousand deduct because the retaining wall wasn't necessary.
Right.
But you're saying we should put back ten thousand for the.
Well, the 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 twenty-eight nine was the retaining wall and a guard rail.
Oh, okay.
So there will be some deduction for the retaining wall, but there will be a thing.
Yeah.
Um, the only thing I couldn't and I wanted to try to get some information and I didn't have enough information to ask was um, in the sheets they gave us, it shows about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar expense for the original design of the tanks. They were going to be precast outside the building and then there was a lot of excavation, plumbing and stuff that's all disappeared. So that's a and I don't know whether the original bid, how much they deducted for the change in the tanks, the actual amount and then the actual amount for the steel. I know the numbers that were thrown around were a hundred thousand for the building and around a hundred thousand for the tanks. Um, difference, but I don't know what the exact deduction was. Um and the only reason I say this is the the cost that Fabian, I do believe, um, gave to VMS was around one twenty-seven. And if we only deducted one, say a hundred thousand, there's actually money in that contract that would cover that additional steel, but I don't know, or that additional concrete, but I couldn't ask those questions because I didn't have the specific numbers. Um, and that's getting a little nifty, but I I think that with the revisions they made and taking the reduction in um, the extra costs, I think we're good.
So do we need to take any action or is that just a discussion?
That's a discussion we had and and if I, if I understand the process right, the change order um that they proposed, I I saw a copy of the email, JP sent it to me, that Sean sent him. It does verify what we talked about yesterday. So the official documentation will go through JP, it'll be presented to the board for the meeting on the nineteenth to to approve.
Okay.
Okay, because at this point we are not, we don't owe anybody money because um as of yesterday, VMS had not been billed by Fabian for that um, stuff. And and I made some inquiries about the cost per yard that they charged us. Um, and anybody I talked to said that's very fair. So so that part, and I don't think the board had it. It was more of those extra charges for the winter time and 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 I was glad that they were willing to take a little deduction, well, they took half a deduction on on there. So.
Thank you very much for your work on that. Appreciate it.
Thank Matt, he sent me there.
So, you know, I appreciate the uh, the work on this and the reductions. And I don't know if this is a question for you or JP, but we had initially an illustration on the um, the change orders that reflected the uh, some of these things being netted out with the, with the hypothetical savings on this retaining wall. And so now we're hearing that really we're not gonna realize all those savings because at least part of that's guard rail. And um, so adding that back into the mix exceeds the amount that we we saved on this discussion. And I, and we've been hearing about maybe we won't need this retaining wall for, I feel like a long time. I'm wondering when will we know? When is a decision getting made about this retaining wall and whether those are real savings or not?
That I'm not sure, that would JP probably.
Has to be a discussion with the site engineer because they're gonna want to do uh, the, first of all, those rocks have to be removed. And we're hoping that they'll use those in part to fill the void on the north end of the lot. And then we're gonna have to do some compaction tests, which the way the fill was placed in there, there might need to be some additional compaction before the engineers will sign off that the retaining wall is not needed. So there's that work that needs to be done, which probably at this point uh, is not going to get done until the spring, I would think.
All right.
So the the twenty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars for the retaining wall was part of the original contract. The twenty-eight thousand two hundred for the extra concrete was not.
Right.
So when that's paid for, I think this will, we won't know the end result until probably spring.
So once we actually get into the building, I assume, and I hope that any potential issues that might result in a change or things that could be that might present options that would involve planning around things that anticipate expenses are gonna go up. So I'm hoping they're watching our overall constraints on this and will give us some advance warning on any future problems. So it's not after the fact that we don't actually have enough money to finish the.
Hopefully, you know, normal construction, I think, and and JP mentioned this the last meeting is the unknowns are all when you start digging. The rest of this should be no surprises. The the building designed to fit the footings, fit the concrete, fit the walls. Um, and then the those um systems that are internal should all be they should be, you know, for that, uh, where you run into this problem is is when you start digging holes and and then conditions are not what was anticipated or or what testing, you know, the testing was done, but you know, if you don't drill right where that ledge is, if you drill twenty feet over and it's just in the wall, crap, you never know that there's a chunk of ledge in there, but they did have a, you know, an amount in there. And and of course, that ledge would show up right where there's got to be a hole and something done, but.
Um, one observation, if we're not putting it, if we end up not doing the retaining wall and we save the money, we are going to have to do something landscaping or something to stabilize that bank. And I don't think that's built in anywhere.
That part I don't know. Yeah.
I I have, I have an idea.
We talked about that and they plan and on putting
Sorry.
They plan on stabilizing that bank with fabric seating it. They they plan on stabilizing that bank with fabric and seating it down as part of the project.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um I ha, if it comes to any further design or plantings, I have an idea. So and and a group that we might be able to tap at less expense. So keep me in mind on that if we, if we go that route.
Okay. Anyway. I I just think that they, you know, they answered our questions that you had.
So we'll look for something coming in so that we can approve it at our
It should be for.
Monday meeting, but the following select board meeting.
It it should be for the nineteenth is that, I think that was the way we discussed it yesterday.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. So um, Bill, if you can add that to the agenda or action item, the change order. Okay, thank you for the nineteenth. All right, anything else for our town health officer, public safety building, coach, uh, coach, clerk, second constable?
I know you're right up against the clock, so I'm all set for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thanks JP.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're five minutes over. However, we have warned for seven o'clock the um meeting on uh, Dire Road, giving up Dire Road as a town road. And we are now at seven oh five, so we're going to recess that portion of our select board meeting and go into our uh, public hearing portion for the Dire Road um, giving up process. So who's here to speak? Okay. Why don't you come on up here, please? Um, as I started the meeting, we did have a site visit and there are minutes, a brief set of minutes reflecting the site visit on Monday, November twenty-seventh. So could you identify yourselves for the record, please?
I'm Sandra Lober, owner.
Deborah Hadaka, owner.
Okay. Now, there are other owners that were identified, correct? Are you co-owners with?
We're co-owners. My cousin Cheryl Mandela is owner.
Okay.
And she's not able to be here.
And her husband is also an owner.
Owner.
Okay.
Oh, Mandela.
And is not able to be here. We do have our friend Andy Blue here.
Okay.
Okay. Um so you first.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
So this is to take testimony and, you know, we can we've heard somewhat from the highway committee, but if you want, I mean, we can ask them to recap why they are asking us to give up and remembering that although you heard some of this, we weren't on the record at the time.
Right.
So it's probably fair, you know, that you say we first. So um, highway committee is Kurt Hathaway and Joe Donardo. So if you could um, briefly summarize why the town feels that we wish to give up um, Dire Road as a town road?
Um, I guess um, the the main reason is the the road is a dead end road that um, serves only just some fields out there. It is, doesn't serve um, any other residents or um, town um, entities. And due to the activities that go on down there, the dumping, and this all started with the appearance of a motorhome down there and Joe called the uh town PD, um, they responded, um the highway got involved, we blocked the road off. And then the blocks got moved. So what we learned in the process was that the town cannot, or nor can you folks gate or block a town highway. So in a committee meeting, myself, Kurt and um, road commissioner Dave Seer, we discussed this at length. We reviewed the uh, information we received from the town council, council, and it was determined that if we the only way that road can be closed, if it becomes a private road and the town gives it up. Then as a landowners, you can gate that, you can shut that off. Um, there are mechanisms in place so the farmers using it and Green Mountain Power can get down there, but that's the only way the road could be blocked off. Well and and we felt this was a good way to go to stop the activities that are going on down there because um, it does become a problem at times. The highway has to go down and clean up some of the stuff that's left there. There's still a bunch of stuff there. Um, PD will be involved if there's drug activity or other activities down there that are not suitable. So we thought this was a good way to do it. Um and and that's basically how we got here. And this is a process that goes on play. Um, the intent is not to cause any problems for anyone, but this is the only way that short section of road can be closed and gated. We, if it's a trail or a class four road or any other designation where the town has involvement, it can't be called, you cannot gate it. It can't be shut down and keep um, people out. It can't be shut down and keep, um, people out of there you don't want. And that's pretty much how we got to where we are.
Okay. Well, we, we hope you won't. I, I think we've made that clear. Um, part of it has to do with our perception that it may, um, impact, uh, the sale of the property or perhaps its value, uh, in the future, but we have some other concerns as well. I, I mean, not, not everyone who, uh, suffers some kind of criminality on their property has their road shut down. So, um, so that's kind of how I'm seeing it. But Joe had another concern. I think he may have talked to you about.
Talked to me at length.
Yeah. Um, about, um, our ownership of the road. And, uh, we would really like to clarify that whole issue before we take on any, um, responsibility for gating the road or, or anything like that. Uh, and his, his concern is whether or not we own the road in its entirety or whether, um, the people who own the, the tractors, uh, the John Deere business, thank you. Um, uh, perhaps own part of the road as well. So have you been able to find anything about that? And, and could you speak to that?
I have not. And, and so after this portion of the hearing, if it's my understanding, the board will discuss this, right? We'll deliberate on it. Okay. And at that time, um, I'm going to bring that up with my fellow board members as to how I think we should proceed, which would be that we'll probably want, we, we'll have to, we'll have to know that information. But I, I didn't pursue that until this meeting because there was no sense of it. Um, but we'll be able, you know, we, we probably aren't going to render a decision tonight. Um, but we could, but I've, I've got some information.
It's up to the board.
Right. So that's where we are.
Okay.
That, that's an issue that has to be clarified before we move forward.
I agree. I mean, we, we all agree that that's, that's. Do you have anything to add Sandy that you would like to say?
I'm just saying, if we could come to compromise, if you do decide to just declare on private road and not a town road, could we have it put in writing that if the property is sold to a commercial buyer, that the town would reinstate it as a town road?
I would have a hard time with that. And I think we discussed this at the site, so I'm glad you raised it here. First of all, that is anticipating something far into the future that may or may not occur. And giving this board's guarantee to bind a select board in the future without knowing the circumstances is probably not something I would agree to. And the second thing is anytime taking a road back or taking over a road, um, we have to go through a process and we're doing it with another road right now in town uh, that we've been asked to take over. We have to know how the road was constructed. And the as-built and what's underneath it and, you know, all of those things that, you know, we don't know and we wouldn't know at some point, until some point in the future when development occurs and the road presumably would be rebuilt. So we can't guarantee we would take it over in the future for those two reasons. I, you folks can disagree with me, but that's kind of the way I see it.
I agree with you on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, by having it a pri- private road, re-owning the road and not having it as a town road would make it more difficult for us to sell the property, to develop it, to bring business into the town, for bring taxes into the town.
Um, if, if your land, and I don't know if this is appropriate for me to get into a discussion, but if your land was at the end of that road, I would agree with you. But your land isn't, your land is, your land goes all the way down to the middle road. So you, the, the, the argument that you would not have access to a town road is not accurate because the land goes several hundred feet past that intersection access to the middle road. So anybody purchasing that land will still have access to a town highway. The, what the land is still off a town highway. That driveway, that road is nothing more right now than a quarter mile driveway that goes, you know, and I understand it's a town road, but it is not a town road that's up to standards. And if that road was going to serve a subdivision or a development, then it would have to, in order to be maintained by the town, it would have to be brought up to class three standards, which would require what Mary said, there's a certain amount of, um, there's a, there's a set of standards that the town of Raulin uses that all class three roads are judged by, the, the construction, what's under the road. Because that road, even if we don't throw that road up and we keep it in order to get that to a class three road and, and be suitable as a class three road, which would require town maintenance, it's still gonna have to meet those standards. And somebody's gonna have to do that. Um, not necessarily the town, the developer may or may not do that, but the town won't take that. Because it's been declassified to a class four road, we would not just go back and say, okay, that's a class three road and we're gonna go back to business like it was five or six years ago. Um, the reason it was downgraded is because it doesn't meet class three standards. It's not wide enough. We don't know what the situation. So this is a road that's been in the town for a long time, but it's just a driveway now at this point. It's just a dead end driveway. So depending on what type of business you get in there, say somebody wants to put a manufacturing plant in there of some nature or some kind of commercial entity and they wanna build that at the end of that road, they may or may not want that to be a town highway. You don't know that. That's, that's an unforeseen. It, it, the right of way is there. Um, I, I understand your concerns, but, but the property is still served by a class three, well-maintained road. So developer might want a road going a different way. They might wanna go off into that field and go somewhere else. So I, I'm not as concerned about that, actually devaluing the property, that road. Um, is, if the property would, if it's a private road, somebody buys the land, they still have access. They have a paved good construction road and then they can determine what they wanna do down the road, but that road right now would not meet class three standards. I think I'm pretty accurate on that on a day.
Do you remember a time when it did?
Um, I think at time that, when there was a pro- house down there and it was done, it was classified as a class three road. So the town would plow it. But I don't know if the road actually ever met class three standards. It may have.
But it, it was a town road. So theoretically, I would say, maybe I'm all wet on this, but, uh, the town should have maintained it.
They, they maintained it to, to the level that it was. And, and as the town has evolved, what once was, uh, acceptable as a class three road has cha- as we have upgraded our standards and upgraded the, the, what's out there to, um, because when you take over a road, you have to have a standard and subdivision or anywhere. So we developed these standards a number of years ago. That road was basically grandfathered as a class three road and it was, it was what it was. If it had, once it was, um, downgraded to a class four, which we did, I don't know, five or six years ago, because nobody lived there and the town was still trying to main, you know, plow it and do whatever. And they just, we, we didn't see that as necessary. The winter maintenance goes out. Um, to reestablish that as a class three road, then it would have to be brought up to standards. The standards when that road were built are different with, than what the standards are now. And, and even if you leave it as a class four road, it's not gonna get plowed. It's not gonna get, you know, it gets a minimal amount of maintenance. And with no active necessary traffic down there, um, there's no, there's no, it's, it's quite different than the section of quarter line road that's on through light, through rat, through road, that that road has to be plowed because we do have people living on both sides. If there were a house down there and somebody was living there, then the town would maintain that as a class four road. And we have class four road, um, maintenance standards that the town goes by. You know, you plow it when you get to it and, and if it's a dirt road, you do what you can for it. But, but the upkeep, it's, it's very, actually kind of rare to see a class four road be, that's paved. But it was a downgrade because it didn't, it wasn't used for anything. And that's why we voted as a board to change.
Okay. Now?
That's a good question. I guess, sure. Realize we're supposed to be taking testimony. Maybe this is a question across the board, but it might be helpful. So there was at one time a prospective developer. There may be more looking at it now. I don't know. Developer came in, bought the property tomorrow and said, okay, we're now building, uh, you know, a bunch of apartments here. And there's gonna be a lot of people living here. This is a class four road. Then what happens? I mean, we have the obligation at that point to then rebuild that road.
As part, as part of the act 250 process, we're gonna stipulate that they have to upgrade that road to class three in order for us to maintain it.
So they would be, they would be upgrading.
Yeah.
Right. So if a developer, if we give up the road now and a developer comes in and wants to do that project, um, well, I guess the problem is they're not gonna get to act 250 until, either way, they're gonna need to rebuild the roads. Suppose they can buy the property and then, um, rebuild it and then come see us.
Right. The biggest question, and, and this is what you brought it, the biggest question that I have and, and is whether or not that road is owned by one property owner. When I talked to, uh, Mr. Mandela, I talked to him Saturday morning and, and then last week after our meeting. And then again, he called me and, and he did bring a map with him. He's in Florida. And on, you know, he could have attended this meeting, um, virtually.
I know. I think it's a technological.
Just a phone call. You get on the phone and he could have, he could have been part of it. But anyway, but that's neither here nor there.
Because he, he would have been willing to attend by phone, I think.
Right. And, and I think that would have helped, but he did express to me that, um, the concern they have is whether or not the, the road is owned by two people. But he said he did bring a map with him and on the map, it, it, to the best of his, um, ability to read the map, the, the property pins are on the east side of the road. And my concern, and I'll bring this up now is later, whatever, um, before we make a decision to throw the road up, I think that needs to be clarified.
Well, here's the question that I would have.
Yeah.
Had, did we notice, um, the, who's the owner on the, the east side? Tractor supply.
Would be the United Ag and Turf.
Ag and Turf.
They did not have it.
Did we give them notice?
Bill, they were notified, right?
Of the whole process.
Right. There, and, and so they did not show up.
Yeah. It doesn't matter who actually owns it because they have had notice.
Right. But the, the, the issue is, is if the, if the road were owned, and this is the theoretical, if the road is owned by, say the, the property line is the center of the right of way. That means the road is owned by two property owners. And we give that road up, each property owner gets half the road, half of the right of way. I believe that's the way that goes.
But we, we don't have to specify who gets what. We just say we're giving up the road. Property owners, you figure out.
Okay.
Who owns what?
The problem will come is when the developer wants that to be a class, to rebuild that road, they no longer own it. And I, and I will have a harder time voting to give this up if it's not owned by one owner. If it's owned by one owner, then, because that was kind of, we've all assumed that, that that's owned by the Dire family and that road is entirely on their property, which means that if we give the road up, they own it, developer buys it, reestablishes a class three road per our requirements to act 250. There's no, um, glitches. They don't have to go to another. If it ends up that two people end up owning it, the other party is gonna say, no, we don't want a road there.
You're assuming one thing that, and maybe, maybe everyone's kind of assuming it. If I were a developer, I might very well be glad that there was no town road I had to mess with and upgrade because that would, that would give me freedom to put access where I wanted it.
They still could, right?
They, they absolutely could.
Whether they own that or not. I, I'm thinking.
I'm not sure that, you know, knowing exactly where the line is.
It, it does bother me some because that would be.
We can look into it, but.
I think we should.
Okay.
It's something we should look into.
Yep.
Okay. But I'm not sure that that's the hindrance that legally, that, that you, as long as the adjoining property owners have been notified.
Right. It's, it's the established as to who ends up with the real estate. We, if, if there's a class three right of way of 49 and a half feet down through there, then each party gets the 24 and three quarter feet. The, the center line of the right of way becomes the new property line. If it's all in one property, these folks own that right of way solely and they, and that would be much easier to reestablish as a town road. Or they, if a, if a developer wants to put a town road in there, they may not even want a town. But if they want to, they could move it out of that area. So.
Again, I think we're speculating quite a bit on.
I, I just would like to know before.
Well, sure, we can look into it, but I don't think the town should go and survey the property. I don't think we need to.
No, I wouldn't survey it. I would look at it, try to find the map, see where the property lines are. And the town book should show that.
Well, the town book may, but the, the, given how old that road is, that thing could have moved over the years. They do.
Or, or we can find.
We might not have any really clear ever, uh, defines, meets and bounds description.
I'd like to find what map Joe was referring to. And he said it was dated, I think, oh, five or eight, but we need that information. And, and it, there should be a copy here in somewhere.
Do you happen to have any? It would have been done for Joe. So it would be.
I think it was done when the prop, when, when, um, I think the survey was done when Alderman's bought the property from Dick Smith. Dick Smith owned the property that, uh, United Ag and Turf is on. The Kia garage was built there. So.
Okay.
United Ag and Turf bought that, um, land from Alderman's. So we need to, there, there should be a record.
Fairly. Yeah. And we've got a decent map. Yeah, we can go in the vault.
And, and, and that would just clarify some information for me. And I think that's important that we know that. And then.
Is that, does that sound like what you understand about the survey? It's somewhere in 2005 or so and it was done, not by you folks, but by the other. Okay. Okay. We need to know what property owner to look it up.
Property owner.
Okay.
And, and then, you know, that would, that would help me, I mean, yeah, you know, to make this decision.
Okay.
I, we're not, I didn't, you know, our intent was not to create any additional burden or any hardship for the owner. It was to try to stop a problem. And on just a little side note, after you all left the other day, I, my truck was back down the road, a little ways down through there. So I was on the phone for a while and a white pickup truck pulled in and they started down, they made the turn off of, from route seven onto that road with the intent of driving down the road and they saw my truck. And so they turned parallel to middle road headed south. And I was on the phone and then when I got off the phone, I just kinda sat there in the truck. And that truck had 15 or 20 tires in the back.
Oh.
And they were there for quite a while and I didn't leave. And so they eventually left and they went back the way they came from. It wasn't like they were driving down the road. So that, I think our meeting that morning stopped the deposit of quite a few truck tires being dumped down there. Um, I thought it was just kinda comical because I even called Dave and told him. I said, well, I saved you from having to come and pick up a whole pile of tires.
Yeah.
Um, our intent is only to stop this activity. It's not to create any hardship. And the only way that road can be gated is if you folks own it and then you can gate it. And there's a method that every person that needs to use it can get in and out without any glitches.
Okay. Any more testimony or any more questions from the folks who are here? And like the committee or the owners, anything else?
I certainly understand that it's not your intention to
Right.
create any hardship, but, um, I suspect that it is going to affect, because that, that's really the business end of the property. So to speak, that's where, yeah.
Basically, the only way in and out of there.
Uh, an impact on its availability and probably, um, on price. But, um.
I don't think you'll be losing, you're not losing any access to the property. The road is not maintained now. So any potential buyer will have access to the property through that road, the same as it is now. The only thing that'll happen different is they're gonna have to open the gate to give it to them. So, but if, once somebody buys that, the problem will go away. Most of the problems will go away because now it'll be somebody down there. There'll be something going on and it'll never, no longer be a dead end dumping zone because there'll.
As far as man- maintaining it as a town road, how much maintenance has the town done down there on that road?
I think once the dwellings left, the, the maintenance was minimal because there was no.
Actually, no maintenance has been done.
Other than plowing it and winter.
From the town. So it's not basically costing the town anything.
But we can't put a gate across it.
It, it's the. It's the activities and, and the nuisance that it's causing, that's what the issue is. What's that, Ed?
What initially started was a camper was.
I realized that.
Over two grand to get rid of this camper. And I, as she tried to shut the road off and overstep my authority.
We appreciate that.
I did try to stop it and actually move the camper out of there on the road. And the only way we're gonna be able to stop that from happening is if you gate it, if you don't gate it, you're gonna continue to dump down there, I can't. Put a guy down there or a girl.
Were Jersey barriers down there at one time and they got moved.
Right, because you, you cannot gate or put barriers on a town owned road. That's why we can't do this, that's why the whole thing started.
Just saying, if they were able to move the Jersey barriers. If they wanna get down there, they're gonna get down there.
Depends on the effort.
Private road.
You also can take in trespass that if there's a way to do it, the town, put trespass notices down there, so you can't go on it, put a gate across. Then if somebody goes down there, I can charge them with trespass. At that point, that's proper posted, whatever. As a public road, I, the police can do nothing, I can, I can't stop people from going down. But if you own it, you'll have more power. You'll have more options to use the police department. That's one way to look at it, I know it's. I know what you.
It's an inconvenience, but it's, it's the only way to, to stop these kind of things from happening, because they, they just. You know, it, it'll become a game to some extent, when, when you put the barrier cage up, then it's like, well, let's see.
Our property, it's, it's other properties in the city and the town where people are doing this.
Sure. I, I had a whole row of tires dumped on Creek Road on my farm, so.
I've had abandoned vehicles at the farm, you know, it, it's whatever, but. North Grove Street is a through road, um, so we can't close it and we can't stop it, this, this is a road that. Is only a road in name, it's not a road in actuality. It, it, it's, it's just a road in name, and, and it. The only inconvenience will be that the farmers that are using it are gonna have to get off the machine and unlock a gate. But other than that, there, or the, you know, if there was one resident down, if there was one home and somebody living there. The town would continue to maintain it. There, the problem would be gone. I don't know how many times the fire department went down there and we had to go put the house up. And then the house finally, I don't know if you guys had it torn down or held up, but the house disappeared. But, but you know, we were going down there pretty frequently, the. Whoever was. You know, whatever, and, and so. It was an expense to, to the family to get that taken down, so. Um, and, and it's, it's unfortunate that you've had a couple of interested parties. That the, the situations haven't uh. Um, panned out for you, you know, and I'm. I'm not sure why, but you know, the right. Party will come along, I, I, I don't think this would.
Hopefully, to bring more businesses into. Hopefully.
Yeah.
Or housing.
Or housing. Apartments we need.
Okay, well, if there's nothing further, I think that um concludes our. Uh, hearing on giving up Dire Road as a town road, the select board will deliberate on. We do need to get some additional information, so we won't be deliberating tonight. Um, and we'll. Um, take this up when we have that information and make a decision.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
Do we need to make any kind of motion to table the? Code on this or anything?
Think we do. Um, we'll just, let's stick it on the agenda for our next meeting, and maybe between then, not, not. Monday's meeting, but our next regular meeting, we'll see if we can get in, take a look at the maps.
Who would we task to do that?
Highway Committee. You might wanna take a look at the road book too, that may have something.
Something I've never seen in my eight years here.
Oh, I have, I know, yeah, I've looked through it, so.
If you, if you, or. If you tie. Joe told me the year that that map was dated, and I think that would help. Um, I think he did give me a phone number, so. One way or the other, I need to get ahold of him, or if you talk with him and tell him how tonight went, um, have him call me again. And, and I can get that information, so I could, cause it should be recorded, and then that'll save us a lot of searching. Okay?
And you're taking up at your regular meeting, your next regular meeting?
It'll go on the agenda, and if we have enough information, we may well deliberate at that time. But it's kind of, we, we've right in the middle of budget season, so we're really slammed with. Meetings and.
This isn't really high on the agenda list, or things to really accomplish. It is, but maybe between now and the time you decide, we decide you'll sell it, so that'll be a moot issue.
Okay, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna resume. So Barbara Noise Pulling, Town Planning Commission Chair.
Hi, I really don't have a whole lot tonight. Um, the, the planning commission will get its first look at a, a new subdivision, very small, one, one home. And this is on the, the Hubbard property, we'll look at that later this week. Um, and get some, you know, ask some questions and get some, some information about that. Um, but that is about it, it has been interesting listening to the various conversations tonight. Um, and if you have any questions. Be glad to. Answer them if I can.
Any questions of our planning commission chair? You do get the numbers in for your budget, correct? Built numbers, okay, we're all set. Good. Okay, thank you, Barbara.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Mike Rowe had emailed me and said he had a, another commitment, and he probably was not going to be able to participate, so. We will skip over, uh, Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner.
I don't really have a whole lot either. Take the dire road thing out there. We. Had five storm responses since the last time we met, it's been nothing major, just a bunch of little. Nagging things. Uh, but it has kept us on our toes, um, we did some pothole maintenance up on Quarter Line Road. Which is as good as that's gonna get, um, just. There's some potholes up there and I didn't get to get it graded, so. We'll just keep filling them as we go and they'll keep coming apart and we'll fill them and they'll come apart. Um, we did put a little bit of money into the, the new Kenworth truck, um, nickel and diamond us. But we got that up and running, we're all good there. And yesterday we, uh, took our new. I'm calling it a culvert camera, cause it's not really a sewer camera. Uh, we went out and tried to do some culvert inventories, um, found a lot of them, need to be cleaned before they can really be inspected, cause they all got. Quite a bit of material on them, so. We got a pretty decent list started yesterday. Post Road. Um, East Pittsburgh Road. And everything kinda coming off that, so. Uh, we'll keep kinda chipping away on that, put together a list of, uh, stuff that needs to be cleaned first thing in the spring, and we'll have to do some ditching and some. Some stuff, but. That's where we are.
How many callouts so far for the, the plowing contractors?
Uh, they've had four. We, we covered one in-house, it was just one of those little small, little nagging things and we just covered it. So there are four.
We're gonna be plagued with those all winter.
That's what I'm feeling.
Gonna be a winner of that crap.
And, and, and they're unpredictable and you're gonna get caught off guard. I expected several inches of snow this morning.
We were out, we were out this morning. Um, I came to work and the roads were. Drivable at sixty, sixty-five miles an hour.
Now, how would you know that?
And because I was driving the speed limit on the, on the highway. Not my first out of town dance. But. Got to Post Road and East Pittsburgh Road, and it was like a bottle, and it was. Was hardly any snow, it was just. Temperatures were just right and. What it is.
Questions for our road commissioner? Okay. Thanks very much.
See you Monday.
Yes. Okay, Marcia Choffee, Town Head Lister, and I think we have a couple of things here.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Marcia.
Um, you've got a couple of. Um, in front of you. Uh, right now, uh, before the grand wish uh gets lodged for the final time, which is December thirty first, we have been really, really. Scrutinizing the grand list to uh come up with any um inequities and errors and omissions that need to be dealt with. And two of them you have in front of you right now. Uh, which was the Leonard property and the Paige Carrera property. Um, I have, I guess I'll open it up to questions as to, you know, what. Uh, what you would like to know about these two properties.
So, um, it looks like one is a. Decrease, and there's something about, this is the Paige Carrera property.
Right.
Parcel, believe, combined to.
Um, Paige. Um, Paige Carrera bought, bought a property. Uh, with one point oh one acres in a dwelling back in two thousand nineteen. And then in two thousand twenty-one, she bought a property across the street, which would have been contingent with her property. Um, of one point oh open land. So at that time, the two properties did not get put together as by state statute. Um, so we uh found that um error and we corrected it by. Combining her two properties together into one.
And that results in a decrease in the grand list value of five hundred and fifty-three dollars?
Correct, because she was actually doing double municipal. Uh, tax rates for both pieces of property.
Okay, so is there a? Um, motion to accept the Paige Carrera adjustment?
I'll move. Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? Questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, so B, do, do we have to sign this?
Carrie does.
Carrie does, okay.
So just reading that to see if we were supposed to include you.
Alright, so do we all get to sign it?
Yep.
Yes.
Alright.
On the top, Mary, on the right.
Backside.
Backside.
Top right.
Oh, okay, so right up here, right.
Paper by doing back to back instead of one page.
Oh, that's twelve, five, twenty-three, okay, I'm passing it to Matt. So the next one is Linda and Ray Leonard's.
So Leonard property. Yep, so. Um, as you can see by the narrative in two thousand. Uh, the owners transferred seven point two two acres of a total of. Uh, eleven point five, eight five acres. Leaving them with open land of four point six three acres. From two thousand sixteen through two thousand twenty-one. The property um was billed. For the residual land and also for the home with the dwelling and the acreage. In between that time, there were um a few. Uh, P T T Rs that took place. Naming part of the property in the actual Leonard property and the remainder in. A trust of the Linda Leonard trustee property. Which we had to separate because the properties were in different legal names. The only way we can make um. One property. Um, is if the properties were in both the same name, even though the owners are the same. The actual property transfers were in different entities. So somehow or other, one of the properties. Was dropped off the grand list rolls. And we picked that up. And. Put the property back, the four point six three acres is open land. The home is on point seven five acres with the dwelling and the, and the land.
Okay, so this results in an increase of thirty-three thousand six hundred on the grand list and. Putting the parcel back on. Is there a motion? To approve?
So move. Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the adjustment. Um, discussion? All those in favor of approving, please say aye. Aye, motion carries. And I'm signing. And passing it to Matt, okay.
So on another matter, Mary, um. Seeing the three legislators here tonight, I'm in the process of putting together a report. Um, and I would like to present it to the board and would actually love to invite not only our legislators, but our state senators. It's on the. H four eighty slash act sixty that was passed this last legislative session. Which is basically an assault on all of our grand list. With the state proposing to take over the reappraisal of all properties. Listers and assessors having no stakeholder in what the state is going to be doing. Um, we've been working with VALA, we've been working with VLCT. To come up with a proposal. But it's. It's scary, Mary, what's going on, it really is, um, the state plans to do. Reappraisals with no listers or no assessors involved, but we are to defend the numbers that they come up with.
State of mind adds the best.
Yeah, um, so you're putting together a report for us. And when, when should we plan on, is there, you would want us to take some action perhaps?
Well, I, I would like to see the board take some action in favor of what we propose. Which is. To. Plan to have listers and assessors as part of the stakeholders. In the process of putting together this plan to take over the reappraisal of um all properties.
Um, so when, when might you have that report to us?
I could have it for you for the next, for the next uh select board meeting.
Okay, alright.
Yep.
Um, so let's. I'm, I'm asking Bill to put that on the agenda, and if he could get it to us. Um, it can go on our packet, if you get it to Bill by Thursday morning before our next meeting.
Absolutely, I've got it, um, I've got it all, um, almost done. Uh, we've got a statement from VALA, we have a statement from VLCT. Which I, you know, I will combine into, into the report and. Um, you know, propose it to the full board.
Okay, and obviously, if you, you know, wanna send that. Report to our elected representatives and let them know it's gonna be on our agenda.
I have already done that previously before. Being, you know, introduced. And sad to say, I got very little response. And, yeah. But now that the, that the bill has passed, um, I can tell you, it's a real assault on our grand list.
Well, I look forward to seeing what, what your report says, so.
Okay.
Thanks for doing that.
Yep, not a problem. So I will have that ready for you for the next select board meeting.
Okay, good. Any questions for Marcia Choffee, our head lister? No, anything else you wanna bring to us, Marcia?
No, I guess that's, that's it for tonight.
Okay, thank you very much, have a good rest of your evening.
Yep, thank you. Yep, thank you.
Okay, Chris Clark, town fire chief.
Uh, good evening. I only had one thing planned for tonight. It was talk about the pickup truck. Um, I didn't get all the pricing back yet, so really no point in talking about it. So I'll ha- I'll have it for the next meeting.
Okay, good, thanks. Um, we realized when the fire committee met, actually it was a pretty small committee, it was me and Chief Clark, um, that we had one quote, but because of our purchasing policy, we didn't either have the state bid quote and, or, and we didn't have any others, so that's what Chris means when he says he's going to try and get more information to us, so that's what's coming. Okay, any questions of our town fire chief? All set? Yep, that's it. So thank you very much, um, Chief Clark, appreciate it. Now, we have a requen- hold, Bill. We have a request from our emergency management director, Marty Wobsterman. Would like to talk to us.
It's a little unusual for me because you always ask me to put a budget in, I'm always like.
Is that a budget?
This isn't a budget, this is a request.
Okay.
This part with you two, this is what the unit is. Um, we've found that the emergencies that had in the past couple of years with the flood have cut off.
Thank you.
Communications has been a problem.
Okay.
And, um, we looked into um, looked into videos that should be the ones that we could use to help cover this problem with communication. Um, so instead of, the, these are um professional two ways that they're using, you know, the UHF. There's a combination of both UHF and VHF, police frequencies and uh fire department frequencies. Um, I've talked to the chief, both chiefs about this. Um, and um, I was a little taken back at how expensive these are because I'm just used to dealing with amateur radio stuff. But this is a lot more than what my amateur radio equipment is. Um, so it's a combination, it's actually two radio chassis and one control head. Could have two chassis and two control heads, but it's like, where am I going to put them?
Are these for your personal vehicle, Marty?
Well, this is going to go, we don't, emergency management does not have a vehicle assigned to it. So what I'm asking for is these radios to be owned by the town and to be used by the emergency management director, whoever that may be, and the emergency management coordinator, whoever that may be. So these radios are expensive and I said, woo, now I got a better ask so they can plan in a budget. So they're forty-seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixteen cents per unit.
Oh, okay.
So that is what I'm asking to be, besides a few thousand more for, like you usually give me in case we have something, which we don't usually do.
So you need two units to outfit one vehicle, is that what you're saying, or is it?
Well, it, it, one u- one vehicle does have, it has a, it is, um, the part that I left over with them, it has a control or it has the
Yeah, basically.
The body of a UHF radio and the body of a VHF radio that gets mounted, but there's one control head. So it limits our usage because we can't talk on both. We can only use one at a time, but for our purposes, I think that's fine.
But these are, you're looking for basically two mobile VHF, UHF.
Combination systems.
For two vehicles.
Right. If at some time we wind up somehow, let's say an old police car, they, they're not going to be using, becomes our emergency management vehicle, then it could be moved into that.
Um, put in Mike Stranger.
So.
We could put it, put it in the Ford Ranger up at Northwood, you just have to get that.
So, huh. I guess I'm still a bit confused. So it's two, two units for two separate vehicles? For the emergency management director and for.
Ultra-high frequency and very high frequency. Very high frequency is what the fire departments and ambulances are using. Ultra-high frequency is what the police departments are using.
Marty, you mean, do you want two setups? One, one for your truck and one for another?
Correct.
Yeah. Which, which is the other?
Well, it'll be emergency management coordinator.
Coordinator and director, is that, that's the two titles?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it's double this number is what we need to have.
Correct, yes, okay. So this is, you're asking us to put this in the budgets so that we would purchase it after July first next year?
You don't have the money in your budget now.
No, we don't. I was just looking at the line, yeah. Okay, alright.
And I knew you were starting to talk budgets, so.
Yes, good.
This is the perfect time.
Yes.
Who wants to keep this?
Um.
Do you need to, do you want to keep the paperwork, Marty, or do you have copies?
Well, I've got.
I can make more copies, so.
I'm, I'm, don't. I'll throw it in my desk for the budget meeting.
We've got a budget meeting coming up. Monday, so we will consider, and as we're working through the general budget, because you come under that. Um, and if you're here, well, either way, we'll do it, but if you're here or you shouldn't be able to make it, um, emergency manager, um, last year, we budgeted for three thousand dollars.
I used it, the year before I used a little bit.
You did a little bit, eighteen hundred thirty dollars.
Um, that was for a meeting I went to and there was a jacket I bought.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
Um, so three thousand dollars is sufficient for this coming year too?
For possibilities, yes, I think, definitely, because I don't.
This will be in addition to that.
Yes.
Right, probably a separate land, I would guess, but.
The generator, the generator maintenance and stuff, that's not, that's just in the general.
Generator is right underneath, that's um.
Because it kind of.
Right underneath.
That's Monday.
Emergency manager.
Yeah, okay.
Monday.
Um, Monday at five thirty, we start.
I'll be down in Massachusetts.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's okay, we've got this and we've got now your request to level fund your salary line, so. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright.
Okay, um, Bill Sweet.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we've done pretty well getting through the things on the desk. I, I apologize for the volume of things on the desk, but more things came in, in the three days before the meeting than they did in the ones also.
Me and Matt.
Uh, I will say about half of it came from you today, so it's okay. Uh, so the last things um we have in the packet are some invoices that we sent out uh, that the, are, will, that have been refused to be paid and I need to know how you want to handle them.
Anyway. Any explanation Bill left, why not? That you convey to us in an.
It didn't come to me directly, the information, so the, the, it came, it came to me through another, another, another party, but basically that they didn't feel they needed, they didn't feel they needed to pay for it. It should, it should be provided.
I think that we have determined in years past that the delinquent tax collector's job is a I don't want to, self-employed job and it's not part, in any part of the town's operating budget and that whatever requirements or needs are on them. That's the way I adopt this was always done.
So is there a motion?
As to what, resend the bill, they're telling me he's going to pay? I, I, I don't know, I mean, that's, that's part of it, I mean, the equipment is.
This is, this is just software.
Yeah, just software, it's a licensing phase.
Right.
And, and I, I can know what the argument is, is well, I can't do my job without it, but it's an expense that goes with your job, so we either resend them or do whatever, or.
In the past, have we paid this for any other delinquent tax collector?
No.
No, they always pay.
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay.
Jim paid it himself, as I understood.
Jim, Jim purchased his own remote access software and he paid for the, for the, for the Microsoft license. Um, he, when Jim left, he kept his, he wanted to keep his remote access software, so he kept it, so um, Don asked me to put him on the one we used here, which was, which was fine, but now it's up, they're up for renewal and that's, that's what they cost, so.
He needs to pay.
That's, yeah. He needs to, any of, it's his job.
I will resend those. Um, the other thing, I got the contract from North Star today. Um, it's, does have the August date included on there uh and for the exact amount we have budgeted, I don't know.
Uh, where is the date?
It's folded in the middle there somewhere.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth at dusk. Okay, and the backup date is August twenty-four at dusk. Okay, what's your pleasure, folks?
This is going to be part of our new budget, right?
No, this is part of the current one right now.
Really?
Did we budget for it?
Twelve-five, yeah.
Because we were probably figuring that it was gonna.
So I, I gotta see how we did it.
How the heck does that work that we have the money be?
We, we paid, we paid for the display we had at the townwide celebration, we paid for that earlier in the year.
Right.
Because we anticipated having it earlier in the year.
Right, but don't we get a discount if we pay for it, like?
No, there's no discount.
Not anymore?
You get more, you get more fireworks.
You get more fireworks.
We don't, we don't get money off.
It's like a discount. So.
Right.
There's money in the current budget.
Correct.
For the display on the seventeenth.
Right, because we always are paying for it earlier in the year. So we pay for it one fiscal year, we watch it another.
I know, but it's July fourth, which is always in the next fiscal year.
July fourth.
But we pay for it before the event.
Yes, to secure that, we always pay for early to secure the date.
Right.
So this is a.
So if, so we have enough money in the budget to pay this?
Have exactly the amount of money we need. It's got its very own line, so.
It does have its own line and I'm looking at the, well, proposed budget twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah, that's the one we're in.
Seventy-five hundred.
Really?
Yeah.
I was just looking at it on the sheet.
I thought we put it at twelve-five.
Sure we did.
Maybe we did four.
Yes.
Because we thought we could get it.
Actually, there was that thought we were going to get it cheaper.
We didn't.
Oh, I know. No.
Yeah.
Well, that's unfortunate. Well.
Yeah, it is seventy-nine, so we're going to come up short in one end.
No. Oh, we, if we have to pay for it now, yes. But if we wait.
But then you can't secure the date.
Can we pay half now and half?
What's it say in the contract? Um, well, that or you end up deficit spending that line.
Hmm.
Just wonder why we only budgeted seventy-five hundred dollars for. But, but that was the fireworks we put on last year. That should have been in last year's budget. This was the new budget for this year.
Right.
Because every other year we've either done ten or twelve-five.
I thought when we uh had this conversation about the last one. Because we were looking at this number, so.
Yeah, because we shorted ourselves five thousand dollars. It might have been an errors and omissions on the board's part, but yeah, I think so. See, I don't understand why we would have been budgeting less money for the fireworks for next year.
Well, for.
Because it was, I, in that one year that um Mr. Choffey was chair, he had a buddy that was going to get his fireworks cheaper. So were those the fireworks we did a year ago?
No, those are the ones we were going to do, we, we did over the summer. We were going, we were hoping for over the summer, but they weren't, they weren't able to secure a license.
Right.
That's why the number went.
Right.
Right, so it's, so, so.
Perhaps that number got carried over.
This number, so, so this number was planned during the last budget season.
Right.
Before we knew any of that.
Yes.
Thinking we were going to get a good deal two years in a row.
Yes.
Right.
And we didn't get a good year, one year in a row.
That's correct.
So. And I have to definitely, I mean, if you're going to do the fireworks, we're committed to that number and they need the money in advance, we're going to have to pay for them now, which.
What's your pleasure?
The deficit spending of five thousand in that line on him for next year celebration.
Well, we had a robust report on the one percent money.
It should, it should wash out.
Probably ought to shoot off some fireworks to celebrate that.
The potential there is kind of staggering if you do the math in your head real quick.
Did do the math in my head.
Did you, did you come up with a smile? Yeah.
I tried to suppress it though before, too soon, you know.
Never, never count your chickens before they hatch, I know. Side move that we accept the contract as proposed and pay the amount and suffer the consequences of.
Do you want to authorize me?
And we would authorize our clerk or chairman to sign on behalf of the town.
Clerk could sign if he wanted.
No, I don't want.
Sure, I get to deficit spend, sure.
I'm authorized, I'm asking the board to authorize us to deficit spend.
And I'm just seconded.
Was that a second?
Yeah, seconded.
Okay, motions made and seconded too. Um, sign the contract and have the, uh, accept the contract with North Star for twelve thousand five hundred and this will be for our townwide celebration on August seventeenth. And um if it passes, I'll be authorized to sign as chair. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye, aye. Can we make a note somewhere in a budget sheet for the next?
Well, I think we'll talk about that Monday. I think that'll be, that'll be fresh in our minds on Monday, so. Yeah, yeah, that.
So that's done.
That didn't work well, so.
Uh, Monday, ask them how much it's going to be a year from now.
Yeah, right.
Probably, probably fifteen, because it's been twelve-five now for two years, so it's probably.
Hmm.
It's up a little bit.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll see if I, I'll see if I can get, get an answer out of them for, for that, but we'll see. Uh, so, uh, the only thing left in your desks should be your bond council proposals.
Did the errors and omissions, okay.
Yep, and then there's two, two things that.
That minutes from the other day, do we have to approve those or something?
I didn't know if you had to or not.
I don't know.
I did them.
Site visit, I don't know, I'll, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of our site visit at Dire Road to show that we actually did one, so it's probably.
There was three of us there, so.
Yeah.
I'd move to approve those minutes from.
Okay, motion's been made to approve. Matt, second?
Second.
Okay, because you were there and I was there.
Um, yes.
Any discussion, errors, omissions, corrections, deletions? If not, um, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Abstain?
Mm-hmm.
I do.
You didn't miss anything.
Uh, so I.
Well, along the same lines, we did. The red committee ones, we're in here again and uh the last time, there was discussion about an edit. Uh, committee's not met, so I, I'm not sure what your usual protocol is on these.
The edit has been applied.
Okay. Um, the rest of my committee is not here, so. We keep carrying them over and approve them at a meeting, or we need to schedule another special meeting or?
So we, when there's just a, the only reason I would think, and this is just me, we vote on sign and knows is because three of us were present at that meeting.
Yeah.
Versus the committee meetings are just two.
Yeah.
Now, theoretically, we could have taken, you, the three of us could have taken action that morning on, and done something.
No, because we still needed to have the public hearing part of it.
You could have voted on something else when you have three.
Typically, you're.
That's what I'm getting.
Heated jackets, right?
You want a record of that, different than when you have.
That we didn't do anything bad, okay.
So in any fact, as long as the, the edits been made, then we just.
Yes, I did take all the records, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, the, I'm still working on the grant for the electric vehicle charging stations here. Uh, the money is still available and we, we still have a very, very small, uh, match to that. But what is the best part about it is that it includes twenty thousand dollars to help prepare for it to be installed, which could largely fund the electrical upgrade to the building. Uh, so, um, we did have, NBF, they did do the walkthrough a little while ago. We got the report from electrical engineer. Uh, that definitely recommended upgrading the service to the building. Uh, Green Mountain Power is looped in on that. Um, but we, we should get a building committee meeting together to talk about how we wanna coordinate this because we could, we could be awarded the grant, but we gotta do the work to do it. But we gotta kinda coordinate it if we're gonna coordinate it with doing the remodel downstairs. So there's, there's a few things here, but there's a, a, a substantial amount of money that could help us with this and, um.
What's the timeframe bill on the grant?
The grant is till the money is spent. So it's first come, first served.
So if we get approved.
Yep. If we get a proposal into them and they approve it, we get the money.
And, and, and we just get it.
Right. And well, I mean, if they approve it, we get it, yes.
Right, and then we can spend it on our time schedule.
We can, there will, there'll be, there's, there's, then we go into the grant paperwork where there's the timeframes and whatnot, but.
That's what I'm just thinking, how fast we're gonna get into, cause there, actually with the remodeling, I think one of the things we talked about is the electrical is like.
The first thing, yeah. That, that room was, was, was first on the list to get done, uh, because that kind of, what we talked about putting in like heat pumps and other stuff downstairs, that necessitated the upgrade. So we would be changing the service to the building. Um, but that's all, that's all part of that. So, uh, there are a few different firms that are, um, willing to do design work. At least one of them so far has indicated they wanna, they would like a retainer. Uh, but those costs can be rolled into and reimbursed by the grant itself, so. But we're kinda, I'm kinda getting to a point where we need to actually have some decisions made upon where we wanna go and, and how we get NBF involved and things like that. So, so I'm, I'm happy to keep going with it, but I, 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 there's gonna come a point where we need to make decisions on, on when we're ready to go with this or not.
Do we have the money in the budget to do it?
We have some.
At least some of the electrical work this year.
We have, we have, in, in the budget, we had the money to pay for NBS, NBF's work this year.
Okay.
Uh, the grant, if I remember correct, is a five percent match and it's very little money and for, for a pretty substantial return, so. Um, I've talked to some, the few different vendors and they're very knowledgeable and they're all very versed in this and they, they know what qualifies for the grant. Like they're all, they're like, yeah, so, so they're willing to work with it. Um, some have their own electricians, some we, we couldn't hire our own to do the work. Um, we do have a couple on our preferred vendor list, but again, that's, that's scheduling and availability, so.
We kinda need to.
Cause we, we do have the latest iteration from NBF on the, and that's kinda where it stopped. They did their survey downstairs. We got the report back and that's, we haven't really done anything since then, so.
But we have the committee meeting and decide, do we need to have Ed come back and talk to us about the next step, or do we? Cause if you're gonna do the electrical, you gotta have somebody come in and design.
Yes.
And then we gotta figure out what that cost is and whether we have money enough to do.
So there is a, there is one of these firms that does the grants that can come and do it for us. They do, they do have a retainer and if we, if we used them to go through that, and I did, I did, I've been upfront with all of them, like here's, we are, we are fully wanting to leverage this money to help us with another project we have going at the same time that, uh, but the, but the design work costs can be reimbursed through, through the grant. If it's, if, if we select them, the only danger is if we go with them and we get it done and we have not to do it, then we just, we still pay them, but. But the, the, the retainer was, I think, like two thousand dollars. It wasn't, I mean, we're talking a substantial amount of money.
We have some money in the building maintenance for this year.
Mm-hmm.
That would offset some, it would offset that. I guess we'll have to get together and, um.
When do you need, oh, the sooner the better.
This, the, the, so I, I haven't, I haven't gone back to NBF yet to say, hey, where, where, you know, where are we at? Because I know they've been contracting on the building, so I, I, I really don't really, I really don't go to them for downstairs until we're ready to make a decision on something, but we're gonna, I, I don't wanna lose this opportunity. It's, it's, I mean, it's just, the extra money to help pay for the upgrades was, was a big, was a big deal. So that's, that really is, is favorable for us, so.
Oh, this is another one of those things. I wish we had some numbers Monday that would help us go. How much to budget in for building maintenance for next year.
So are you asking us to approve the for renovation project? Are you asking us for approval to go ahead with a grant application to, to this electrical?
We've already moved ahead with a grant application, right?
We, 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 we've made it through the grant application, the preliminary one. So now we're in the group that gets a design and a, and a cost to the, to the grant coordinators. And they say, okay, yes, we're gonna prove a project and here's your money, you can move forward. They, they will do that until the money runs out and there's no like, there's no like grand ending date. It's just a, it's, it's one, as long as the money is available, so.
So what's the downside?
Renovation, uh, proposal or you just?
No, just the, we need, cause part of the renovation was, was legitimately, we need, we need to, we need to fix our distribution in the downstairs. So that would be upgrading and, and one of the, one of the guys I was talking to just recently, I said, maybe we start with putting in our, our new panel and the only thing that goes in it are, are the breakers for the EV chargers. And then they're the first thing in it and then there's two side by side, but we upgrade the service and we, we add the new panel and put the breakers in for that, so that can get done and then we keep going from there. But, but we, we're gonna need some, some people that are, that can talk about that and kinda have, how that plan's gonna go together. And I'm assuming that's gonna be Ed and his, his team and then maybe their electrical engineer. I'm not, I'm not sure, so.
So I guess before we have a building committee meeting, maybe if you reach out to Ed and share this information of the grant and where we are.
Okay.
And what the proposed upside of the twenty grand to upgrade it and then I don't, you know, if we hire one of their people to do the work, they'll do the design work, right? Um, I don't, you know, but I think that would be, since we've selected them as our design architect for this project, that we should run this by them and see if what his input is on it.
Hmm, and there, there are vendors that, a part of this group that we can purchase the chargers from and then we can have them installed and there's other ones that will do the whole thing. They'll do the, they could do the upgrade, they could do the installation, like we could purchase, like we could do the whole thing. So it's just a matter of selecting the one that we wanna go with. I've got three that I'm kinda working with right now.
We can get the service to the building upgraded, get the electrical distribution upgraded.
Yep.
Then as we do the renovations, they will have a new distribution boxes to work.
Start with, yeah.
And, and some of that distribution will need to know kinda what the rest, what the new part's gonna look like a little bit. So that's where I think Ed's part would come in, but I think this would be what I'd run by, cause he may have a suggestion as to how to move forward to.
Absolutely. So that's, that's, that's what I wanted to know. Where, 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 we, like, so we're kind of coming down to where we have to make some decisions and make some steps. So, and I, I'm more than happy to have that conversation with them, so, yeah, absolutely.
We should have a plan in place so that once, if and when that money becomes available, we can get that done.
Yep.
Because it's pretty likely we could get the renovations to the electrical done and the charging places in probably prior to the actual renovations downstairs, but when they get started, we'll at least, we'll have this, cause that is the first leg of it.
Right.
It's getting.
We, we can't, we can't do the charging stations until the service is upgraded, but the service really can't be up, I mean, the service could be upgraded, but there's nowhere for the extra stuff to go, cause every panel's full, so. So there are a few things here.
Need that design, how that's gonna work, the potential for new load and distribution. So that's where you're gonna need an electrical engineer.
Yep.
Yeah, so I think that would be, reach out to Ed and then we can get some feedback and then if we need meeting, you need Kurt and I to come in and maybe meet with him or meet with somebody or help answer some questions or we can do that, yeah.
If I can get ahold of him before the end of the week, then I'll let you know Monday. Good.
That's a good.
Okay.
Anything else? Um, let's just go through, Marty? Well, we've got the rest of the agenda to go through.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I just, anything else for Bill? We'll start that way. Okay, so, um, the rec committee. Um, we've worked, is any action required?
Aren't these the minutes from the last?
Those are updated.
Yeah.
There's an amendment to them.
Yeah, those are, same as last time.
Same as last time, okay, fine.
So, yes. Question from uh, this results from, you know, we got some feedback on, um, the fact that our, our minutes reflect on a vote about this policy last time. Um, you know, from my perspective, the point of bringing it up at all was see if the board wanted to, um, change direction before getting into another sports season on that subject. Um, but, you know, I brought it up right after discussing a committee report that had just happened. Um, so if that, I, I'm not sure if it's something we need to vote on or not as a committee, but if if the committee feels that we do need to vote on it and perhaps we ought to put it back on an agenda for future meetings, so it can be warned as such as being on the agenda before we vote on it. Doesn't really matter to me how many times we we talk about, you know, if the board was gonna change direction, we can do that at any time. So, you know, we can discuss it at, at any meeting.
Well, it's not the committee's recommendation that we do so.
Committee's recommendation is that we continue the policy, which is, you know, was something that was.
What we adopted.
Established informally by rec directors. Um, it has been ongoing. And, um, you know, I guess the only issue is do, is, is there a necessity of a formal vote of the select board to maintain it or not?
We did last week.
We did.
Two weeks ago, we voted on that.
Right, my point is, it wasn't on the agenda before we voted on, so.
Well, it's not on the agenda this time either.
So.
Somebody complained because we voted on it and it wasn't on the agenda?
So, I'm glad we're putting it back on the agenda for future meeting and we can vote.
We can vote on it again.
Let's find and discuss it at that meeting, then we can discuss it.
Is that the committee's recommendation?
Well, my committee's disposed, so.
Right.
And the other one here.
I think if somebody has a complaint that they want raised with it, they can come in and speak at the beginning of a meeting about it, but we voted on it.
Yeah. I didn't, I, I think we voted on what has been a more or less an unwritten policy.
Correct.
That has been accepted by the area rec directors and I think some in schools. And because of a complaint, it is now a written policy and we just approved the written policy. That's always been the unwritten policy. I don't think anything changed.
Right.
Okay.
So, I don't. Unless we're gonna make a change, I don't think we need to bring it up. We don't need to have it on the agenda.
Okay.
I think we're good with that.
Someone wants to put it back on the agenda in the future, we always can do that.
Okay. Alright, um, fire committee did meet, um, mostly about the purchase of the truck. You heard that we do need to get at least the state bid, um, price and Chris is working on that, so. Um.
That's how they bought the last one. What, what Senator Scott, I think they're looking for duplicate truck, aren't they?
Pretty much, I think.
And that's the same truck that Dave just purchased or put out to buy.
Yeah.
Only his will be diesel rather than a gas.
But we don't have the number from the state bid price, so, and so we, we have nothing to recommend to you.
And, and what I did find out is that, and you, and it is written right here that a red one is not available right away.
Ah.
Red is becoming very difficult to get. So I do believe the new town's highway truck will be blue. Because that's what's.
Really?
Huh? Can't be blue, the city's blue. Not that blue.
Oh, God.
It's a different blue. Oh, what do you mean by?
Has anyone told Dave?
Like a baby blue? Dave knows. I don't know if you've seen my son-in-law's Ranger.
Okay, moving right along.
It's kind of a nice blue.
So that takes.
If you want a truck, you get what's out there.
The rec committee and the fire committee. Um, Board to your testimony on Dire Road under action needed, we did that. Um. Board to select bond, bond council.
So we have a Zoom caller who would like to comment, is it possible to unmute the caller? Or, or they have to press star or something, uh?
What issue is this?
They have, they have a good way for it to press it, but they will, if that, is that the call in person?
Yeah.
They need to identify themselves before they can speak at a public meeting. So they can do it, but they, we have to have them on the name for the record, so.
I, I don't know how they can, uh, be your communication with them or?
They're muted right now.
Okay. Hi. Looks like the box has lit up?
Yes, can I, is it okay to speak?
Well, we need to know who you are, please.
Yep, so my name's Bridgette Remington. I'm here on behalf of a minor resident of Rutland Town. And I had requested that I be able to address the select board during an executive session because the information I have to share is protected by FERPA. And I know that I needed to, Mary expressed that that had to be voted on. And it has to do with a policy that was recently, so I just wanted to see if it would be possible to have the select board vote on that so that it could move to executive session so I could address the select board about a minor.
This concerns the policy from the rec committee that we just reviewed. And we, we cannot go into executive session to discuss a policy.
Correct.
Um.
Right, it, it's not about that. You guys were talking about it.
Sorry, go ahead, Bridget.
Right, this, um, this was about allowing a minor to speak and what that minor would be talking about would be FERPA protected.
And how is that related to a policy? I'm, I'm not making the connection.
It isn't, so what you guys were talking about was a community complaint. I'm unaware of a complaint. I was aware of a minor resident who wanted to speak about something to the rec committee, but, um, you know, it technically when you request that a select board hear an issue, then if a committee is gonna take it up, the committee's supposed to provide notice. And the committee didn't provide notice and went ahead. I mean, it's a, it's a longer story, but I, it is about a minor and what the information that needs to be shared is a protected record. And so it's on, it's impossible for that minor to be able to address the committee with their concerns. It's not a complaint. They, they can't do it in an open meeting.
So under which part of the open meeting law are you suggesting we can go into executive session?
Under section title one, section three, one, three, A six. It could be under seven as well.
School of Records, is that?
Yes.
Essentially the.
But it could also be under seven, but it, you know, six makes sense. Cause it is about records.
It's just, we don't have it in front of us. Do you have the, um, language to cite for us?
Yeah, I don't, but I can pull it up.
Or just the.
I sent it to Mary, so I thought she, I was thinking that it was something where if I provided the site, then Mary would be able to evaluate it and then make a motion to see if it could be discussed. But I hadn't heard back, so apologize.
I think the challenge. I think the challenge is we don't know what the information is to be offered, so I guess my suggestion would be if we're down to, I think maybe we have another issue to address before we otherwise go into executive session.
If we need to.
But if we need to.
Yeah.
And I guess my, my suggestion would be that we go into an executive session to receive the information that's proffered to be subject to that executive session, but that we the, the understanding that we can't. Um, I mean, we can receive the information, we can't just, I don't think we can discuss this policy.
Um, yes, absolutely. I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
Can committee meet and review this information in an executive session? Because I have been in a couple committee meetings where we have done stuff In executive session in that committee. So there's no.
We have.
And so would it be more proper or if the? This was. Done through the rec committee first to to hear what's going on and and get a feel for it, and then they can. And and they can do that in executive session. You can't discuss the policy anymore than we could as a full board, but they could at least hear that information versus, cause. Usually when there's issues, they usually go through the committee first and then we end up. But I don't.
And Bridget, let me just say, you did hear back from me and I told you it wasn't my decision to make, it was up to the full select board.
Well, that's why I brought it up, so I sent you, and so this is what I said, just so you know, cause I looked.
Oh, wait, 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 no, I'm not gonna get into this, cause we do still have.
Oh.
Some additional information. Joey has made a suggestion. That um, the rec committee meet with you to review this information in executive session. To see if it. A should be an executive session, the in- information coming in, and then how we deal with. Um, its application, this information's application to the policy. So is that?
I'll make that a motion.
Okay.
Follow our.
All right, so that's a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
One second though.
All right, motions made and seconded to send this to the recreation committee to. Um, afford the opportunity for this executive session discussion.
So, okay, so discussion.
Yeah, okay, yes.
I guess my uh, by way of discussion, and I guess my question to Bridget. Would be whether it, well, what? If any, at this point, there is for time sensitivity on this, because um.
None, because.
We've had some trouble coordinating, just a second, so we've had some.
Yeah.
Some issues coordinating everyone's schedules up to this point to get everyone together. Um, I don't know when Sharon will be available. Um, and and as we've told Bridget, we've got a bunch of budget meetings coming up and stuff, so. I I don't think it's something that the committee is going to be able to take up again. This month, so from my perspective, I'm somewhat inclined to just. Deal with it while Bridget's here. Um. The unless um. In in doing a committee executive session, I don't know if we can involve Mike. Rowan that, or if if Bridget intends for Mike Row to be involved, cause he's not here either. So I guess those are questions to you, Bridget.
I mean, timing wise, we, the minor requested to be able to address this. Alm- almost more than a year ago. In September of la- of twenty twenty-two and waited really patiently and kept following up and. So I, you know, and now the. It's already in place, it was rushed through for which, you know, I don't understand what happened process wise, but. The. The minor Rutland Town resident was just waiting. So it will be no different to wait or. As long as that. Person knows they can speak whenever that time is. Is the time. I believe on behalf of that minor, I represented in the email that. We requested for the rec committee to wait on the policy until after the holidays, because we. We became aware of Sharon's surgery. And then the committee chose not to do that and decided to hold the meeting on the twenty-first and then send it to the select board on the twenty-first. Without notifying the minor, so the minor couldn't participate either. You know, in the. The rec committee was aware that the miners could not participate on the twenty-first, so Ben wasn't able to participate. In either the rec committee or the select board, as long as the minor can. You know, as long as somebody will consider whether they can go into an executive session. And that's the first step and and that's fine if the rec can do it, I just. In watching the rec committee minutes last time, Matt, you had said. Mary told you that it couldn't be an executive session, so then.
Well, we couldn't. We, yeah, I mean, that was based on the information we had at the time about discussing this policy, which was uh our understanding of. Our mission at that time, so I I take it from your. Your comments um, that there are other issues extending beyond the. Sort of four corners of this policy that we had discussed that. We need to hear about. Um.
That's right. That was the whole reason we asked, that I mean, that was why I asked on behalf of the minor. Was because it was a unique scenario and I thought the rec. That the select board or the rec committee or whoever needed to hear about it would have the opportunity to hear, but. Because everything just kind of steamrolled for some reason. Without that minor being able to.
We can.
It's not that I I'd rather not discuss this, cause I want. The person who's affected to be able to be here.
Well, I think Matt was making exception to the fact that you said it was somehow being steamrollered. Where I think the rec committee was trying to be responsive and timely, so your characterization probably, you know, triggered a bit of response.
Right, maybe this goes back to. Before my time, but.
I just mean the rec. I think it is important, though, to note, like, the request to be able to speak was made in September twenty twenty-two. Then that request was renewed by me. In June of twenty twenty-three, August of twenty twenty-three, September twenty twenty-three. But rather than notifying. The minor that they could, that their issue was going to be discussed, the rec committee scheduled the meeting and didn't notify that minor. And then voted to send something. To the select board, so that's what I mean by it's, I didn't mean they were steamrolled over, what I meant was the process steamrolled ahead, no matter what was in the past. It was going forward for some reason in this. Three-week period without waiting for the minor to be able to speak, so that's all, that's what I meant, I didn't mean.
So I think. Some of that information maybe didn't make its way to the committee. My understanding initially was we were being asked to review. The policy, which we did, we were then asked to. Um, have another meeting to. Review it again with. Everyone with with participation, which we tried to do, and part of what we were trying to do was be responsive. Number one in general, but also number two and and to the to the sports. Schedule now, so as I mentioned earlier, you know, the board can decide to change this policy at any time, but um. You know, the the position is right now that the policy is continuing for this current um. Season, um, I I I'm happy to discuss it, you know. Now in executive session. Or not to discuss, to receive the information, I guess, that's being proffered in executive session or. Uh, at a future. Committee date and um. Yeah, the only thing I guess that would matter to me on that is whether. Bridget, you would want uh Mike Rowe to be present, cause he's not present currently.
I would wanna. I'd probably want to confer with the other people. Um.
So it sounds like then.
I mean, based on the. As long as you can make, as long as the rec committee can make the decision on the executive decision, this, sorry, this late, I appreciate your time. As long as the rec committee can independently make the decision on the executive session. I don't see that it needs to be dealt with tonight, it was just my impression from the rec meeting that you were deferring to Mary on it.
So.
Fine.
I think.
Waiting's fine.
All right, I think we're ready to vote on a.
Okay, so the motion is to send this matter to the. Uh, rec committee for determination about whether to take information. Um, from a minor and whether it should be an executive session. Is that fair?
That's fair. The only question I have, Marion, is how come if this started in September of last year? Um, I don't recall this coming to our attention.
No, the the I I do recall that Bridget emailed me and raised the issue of the policy and I sent. The email to Mike Rowe, because he was in charge of the.
Well, that was just now, right?
No, that was, that was in June or July.
Good. Bridget said this started September of last year.
Yeah, I don't know what that was.
There was a discussion.
The.
At that time.
The original. Oh, I'm sorry, the original request was made to Mike Rowe.
Okay, cause it was, as far as I know.
Then. The minor waited.
I don't think it has.
Okay, so so I'm kind of in the dark here.
So it was renewed this year, and that's how we got, where we are, so.
Okay.
Um.
All right, that's just, I needed some history lessons.
So the motions, the pending motion is to send this to the rec committee. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. If we not opposed, so. The matter goes to the rec committee.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Um, you haven't, we're down to action item.
Thirty-seven hundred, no. Eleven meaning of getting one.
All righty, I know, I want to gavel.
There you go.
All right, so we, you have in front of you. Um, four. Um, proposals to act as bond counsel. Um, and. One is from. The firm of Paul Franklin Collins, the attorney is Thomas Maloney. Another is from. Which? Okay, another is from. The firm of. What's, what's his whole name? Um, Robert Fletcher, who's an attorney with. Something, something and Fletcher, Stitzel Page and Fletcher. Um, another is from Keith Roberts. Who is with the firm of Darby Colter and Roberts. And the fourth is from the firm of Primer Piper, Eggleston and Kramer from Elijah Emerson. And. There are, I have shared that, well, Matt and I put together the request. Um, emailed out to law firms. Re- I think we we sent it to five, we've received these four responses. And we made them aware that we had a bond application deadline of. Um, aug- or December eighteenth. And um, if you actually look at the Primer Piper Eggleston thing, they explained what bond counsel does, and the first part is. Um, fairly brief, but it is to be identified as the bond counsel. So we can submit their name and information as part of our application packet. Um, so Matt's done some numbers crunching. Little bit, and Matt and I have conferred briefly. And we have. Think. Narrowed it down to two.
I think so.
Okay.
All yours.
All right, well, we've, so he doesn't seem to want to speak, so.
I can, I can elaborate.
Um, we can, we've eliminated two, let's start that way. Um. The most expensive one appears to be um, from Keith Roberts at. Uh, Darby Colter and Roberts. Initially, he was basing the um. The fee on a percentage of what the bond was, so he had sixty-two hundred fifty dollars. When we said that a lot of the stuff was in place, he uh came up with a fee of. Five thousand dollars, that's the high one. Um, we also eliminated. Paul Franklin Collins. That was. Because they were also slightly higher and I'm looking for, I had all of these notes.
That was forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred.
None of these, I mean.
Right, these are.
We didn't, we didn't know what to expect going into this, I think it's fair to say, at least I haven't.
I have no clue.
Before. These are for the most part, there's not a huge difference in in price, I'd say the first. One was a little bit more of an outlier, others are fairly close together and they're and they're all good firms, so um. I I don't know that there's. necessarily a wrong choice here, I was generally impressed by the promptness and thoroughness of the responses and. Um, the reassurance that we got that this was all very doable in the time frame.
It was like, phew.
That we have in front of us, so um, it was all good.
So the two that we have. That we recommend to you, either one. Is Robert Fletcher, that was the single email, and I will tell you, he was, he was on the road, so he had to. Um, replied and put together a pretty letter, he just had to reply, and his current bond hourly rate is two twenty-five an hour. He estimates about fifteen. From, to get the town from here to money in hand, plan on fifteen hours or so. And I think I calculated that at, what, three?
Thirty-three seventy-five.
Thirty-three seventy-five. And. Primer Piper had it in two parts, the first was. Uh, the very preliminary work to get the application in. And that cost was between five hundred and a thousand, and the second part of that was to do the second phase after the application. Has been accepted, and that would be between twenty-five hundred and three thousand, so their estimate is between three thousand to four thousand dollars. Um, I will, you know, full disclosure. Um, Primer Piper and Bob Fletcher both have principals that have served on the board of. But are no longer on the Vermont Bar Association Board, so at one time they were briefly my bosses. But I did get to know, and either one of these firms would be fine to work with.
So I'd move that we um. Hire Robert Fletcher to be our bond counsel for the purpose of securing the bond for the public safety building.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded um, to select Robert Fletcher. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Um. All vote yes and no one opposed, so thank you all very much. We'll be in touch with him and start the process.
Do we have what, thirteen days?
We have thirteen days, but apparently they weren't flustered at all by the fact that we were reaching out to them, it was like, yeah, this is what happens. Okay. I don't know.
Let's get to them.
Yeah, really.
No problem.
They know what they're doing.
They know what they're doing. All right, action needed, see, we have uh talked about the change order to the public safety building and we'll see the proposal for us to vote on next week. Executive session. I don't believe I have anything.
Good.
Does any other member of the select board have an executive session? Matter? No? Um, Marty, you had one thing before we wrapped?
Yes, I totally forgot about it.
Oh, no.
There was a question about um, the. For pump station up on. Uh, north. Up on seven, north of town.
Oh, that. Seven, seven. Yep.
And I had um, had a little discussion and um. The current chairman of the Rutland Town Garden Committee. Um, and her um. Boardman.
Thank you.
That's me. Uh, we'll be working on that along with our other gardening that we've been doing. And um, we thought, and we're gonna take this to the um. Rutland Town seniors. And see if the Rutland Town seniors would like to do something. In Rutland Town, other than eat lunch. So I'm hoping to make a um, a Rutland Town Garden Club.
Oh, nice.
And uh, but we'll take care of uh. You know, the gardens out here. And if the. That's supposed to be doing, working on the monuments, if it gets that done, we'll work along with that. And.
There are also. At least three master gardeners in town. Master gardeners or master gardener interns who would probably be very interested in joining forces.
If that information could be passed to me, that would be great.
Okay.
Good. And um, so we're trying to make something out of this to put people.
Nice.
To make it a town project.
Yeah, I think that's very nice.
Taking care of, so. Post Road and Seven, this matter.
Need budgeted money for supplies or whatnot?
They they currently spend out of building units, so we would, it would hurt to put a little extra in there to help.
Yes.
Remember that.
And.
Sarah said an amount that I can't believe, but. She just said, oh, I just need two hundred dollars, and I'm like, no, you don't, you need a lot more than that.
In the old days, that would cover a lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything further?
Just something to keep in mind, and I'll bring this up on.
Been a pleasure to sit in the whole meeting.
With a general um. And it's, it's the power, when he brought up about the pumping station on there. And it's, it's the power, when he brought up about the pumping station on there, is once the public safety building is up and done, we'll need to have some funds available to supply power to that pumping station at, uh, State Place from the building so that it can be covered by the generator. So I don't know if we wanna add something in the budget to cover that under, or if that would, actually, that probably could come out of the water and sewer count.
Oh.
Because that is what that would be from, and we could just maybe pay it out of that. That would be, that would be appropriate, I think.
Just to give it backup power, right?
Huh?
This is the backup power.
Well, in order to make it work, you have to power the pumping station from the fire station.
Right, yeah.
And then when the power goes out, the generator will come on and it'll be gone.
Sure, yeah.
So, so what it means is running a power line from the new building down to the foot of Post Road and Conduit. And then the power will come out of that building. It'll be part of the electrical in that building. And then when, cause if that's gonna be an emergency operation center and the power goes out for a couple of days, the poop pump has gotta work.
Right.
And that's one of the things nobody thinks about.
And that would be.
Department has the generator that they can power that pump station with.
But that pump station is single-phase, I'm pretty sure.
That generator is single-phase?
The which one?
The.
Right, but it would be better if it was. Right, if it's just part of it, cause.
Okay, Matt had something too.
But I think it's just something we should just put in there and just do.
These budgets that we had, have these, uh, information for next week or?
Preliminary, yes.
Pile them on top of my other preliminary.
I'm just leaving the line right there.
Those are current as of.
There's a trash, everything else that's in this, might be in this drawer.
Unless you put.
This one is done.
Okay.
Except it's not.
Would you miss?
Uh, I didn't miss anything. I was informed that Beamers changed their rate. So it made very slight changes.
Not, it certainly didn't go down, right?
But, I mean, it may have changed budgets by a hundred dollars or a couple hundred dollars. It's, it's a very small number, so. But I've, I've updated.
The pieces we're gonna get the next night?
Yes.
So I can just toss this one for now.
You can, cause. So if you have one that's not dated, don't, don't have it. Don't, don't keep it.
Okay. Alright, well, that's.
Anything else?
Hold for a turn.
Second.
Questions made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.